A employee of the ANC in parliament, I'm coming from Eastern Cape, Oa Tamba region. I will then ask the members of the portfolio committee to introduce themselves.
Sambanan, i kamalamu elfaso amatebula, ni lungale parliament, ni serva gule committee esio, ni mele illangano yaga African National Congress, illangano yavantu, ngobuya ngibimba M'Npumala Konala ika, yabong.
Yabonganga ngabingelela, ikaba ngomtose si waga nguma lo wey lungale katha, yekulewe sizwe, ukamwaga ngoba wey lungale parlamende, oservagulo le niko meet, thanks.
Sambanan, i kamalamu Tim Marchele, lungale African National Congress, National Assembly, a member of the portfolio committee on public works and infrastructure, ekayakse push package, yabong.
Sambonani, gama ulindi waga mchobo, ni lungale parlamende, impinekwe ilunga lale komite, okulu kakulu gitunye African National Congress.
Sambonani, lo okuluma yu matapelo Siwisa, alongo ne economic freedom fighters, also deployed in the national assembly serving in the committee public works and infrastructure, the Kamka Ekimba, the Northern Cape.
Good morning everybody, my name is Madeleine Higlin, I am a member of the Democratic Alliance, I am a member of the national assembly serving in the portfolio Department of Public Works and Infrastructure, and I come from Kharting.
Good morning everybody, my name is Samantha Graham-Maree, I'm also from the Democratic Alliance, I serve on the portfolio for public works and infrastructure in the national assembly in parliament, and I'm from Khafranet in the Eastern Cape.
We have been joined by one of our colleagues from the national assembly in parliament, Honorable Nolvuyo Tafeni, who is a member of EFF. I'm still waiting from Honorable Matebula so that I can introduce the leadership of this area, of Inkangala district, he's still just writing the names, we will introduce and acknowledge them, also the leaders of the political parties, if there are any here, I'm still waiting from the political parties that are here with us, we will also introduce them. We are here as this, are you, sorry. Okay, thank you. Okay, we are here as the portfolio committee to seek your views on the draft bill number 23 of 2020, the expropriation bill. A bill that has been developed by the Department of Public Works and Infrastructure to repeal Act number 63 of 1975. An act that is being used currently for expropriation of land for public purpose and public interest. An act which was developed and adopted by the then government, the upper date government. An act which predates even our constitution of 1996. It is therefore necessary that the parliament that is led by Ukongo Lozse, it sought out and correct those acts that predates our constitution. This draft bill that we are bringing to you, it also seeks to have uniform and standard ways of dealing with expropriation of land for public use and public interest. When we are referring to public use or public purpose, we are referring to when a government wants to build an access road, when a government want to build clinics, when a government wants to build a school, a dam, or even a hospital, that is for public interest. Many spheres of government have that right to expropriate. For example, this municipality that you are in, it has a right to expropriate land. Maybe there is going to be a human settlement project, and we have that land that is lying there belonging to a certain person. The municipality has a right to expropriate the land. Then this bill that we are bringing to you today, it seeks to have uniform and national standards of expropriating. Because currently, as I indicated earlier, we are using that expropriation act of 1975. That act doesn't indicate how the municipality should expropriate, how the department should expropriate, how whatever sphere of government that wants to expropriate. So this bill seeks to ensure that there is a uniform way that talks to all the expropriating authorities. We are not bringing section 25 of the constitution here. There is a process that was dealt last year on the amendment of section 25. Friday in parliament, the ad hoc committee adopted all the views that you expressed on the amendment of section 25. We are not here to deal with that, I thought that I must explain that to you. In terms of the process, we started by inviting written submissions. We did that from the 10th of December 2020 up to February 2021, 28th of February. We have received a lot of written submission on organizations, individuals that supported the bill, that object to the bill, with their reasons of course. On the 24th and 25th of March, as this portfolio committee, we held a virtual meeting in which we invited all those that requested to have oral presentations, and we listened to them. We are now going around provinces, holding public hearings to seek your views on the draft bill. So you must not have fear when you present the view of your organization, we will take that as you present it. In this meeting, we have invited Amakosi, the political organization, the civic organizations, the religious leaders, all the stakeholders that we have in our communities. And as such, we are expecting views from all of those parties that we have invited today. We are going to point to you only if you raise your hand and ask you to come forward, we have only 10 chairs, which means we'll take only 10, and express your view. We will only give you 3 minutes, but you must also introduce yourself and tell us which organization are you coming from, whether it's a civic organization, organized labor, political party, or even you coming just as an individual. You are all welcomed in this meeting to express your views. With those few words, we are welcoming you in this meeting, and we invite you to raise your views in support or opposing the bill. You are also free to speak in any of the 11 official languages. We have been joined again by Honorable Kanya Tesa, who is our colleague from the national assembly, a member of the EFF. As we have indicated, we have our leaders here, a leader of a political party, ngomhuoliwa sexual in law. We have the emec of human settlement in the Mpumalanga province, the regional chairperson of the ANC in Kangaala region, Comrade PD Imashilo. We have the executive mayor of Emalacheni municipality, Honorable Laina Malaji. We have the executive mayor of Emakazeni municipality, Honorable Thomas Ngwena. We have the executive mayor of Tembizileani municipality, that is our host, Honorable Nom Samtreni. We invite Honorable Nom Samtreni as our host to come here on the stage. No, we'll allow you to speak. And also, emec wetu, Comrade Uspidi, please come to the side. You have not taken the name yet. Thank you. We have the executive mayor of JS Moroka municipality, Honorable Roda Matabe. We have, we have our, uh-uh, no, 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 no. We have our traditional leadership. Please switch off there, switch off that mic, please switch off that mic here. Switch off, switch off that mic here. Thank you. We have our Amakosi. We have our Amakosi and traditional leaders. I understand what you have been doing there, that's why I said they must tell them. Thank you. We would also like to acknowledge the traditional leadership from our tribal councils and tribal authorities that are with us, but we are still waiting to get the names of all those Amakosi that are with us today. Our team will assist us. Let me again repeat what I said earlier on. We will introduce all the leaders of political parties that are here. We have been doing that since we started in Limpombo, and we had no issues. We have been with leadership, the provincial chair of EFF in Limpombo, in all the venues that we were with, and we introduced him formally. If the leader comes here, I have Honorable Siwisa, she informs me and I introduce him as such. So I'm not going to take hands, please, we must note that on the issues that we are presenting.
Lo cha ni, i komite enga pampindu, i komite edo safambi le ngoma, unoni tando ngongwane, ongusalo wa yo. I komite le, i komite eposa ili sho, umnyango weze mesebenzi ombozo, nomtanga lasegele. Umnohoho uza we komite, lokambela, lo mpahatwa ngapasuka maspala wetendi siwehane. Uzo kba was, ompharati bonyana, na ulashele lobotlana, uveze imibono, ngomteto mlingwa, osesem chamo, oshongoswago. Uguti, utatwe inaka namchana ipasha, ngapandje wesngepeselu. Umteto mlingwa, oshongoswago lo, ucha misalela, umteto mlingwa, number 63, oakuchwa ngoninti, oabetwa ngoninti 1975. Oabetwa ngukulume nde wes kateso we banjululo. Umteto lo yokateke, uchi keme ngomba na, bongasatu luli uxe uktipasha, itatwa ngubani gupi, gulandelewe ipi gambiso. Manje, umteto mlingwa, oshongoswago, number 23, waga 2020, oguti utatwe ipasha. Nghiwolo owenza ukti, i komite ikambele imfu ndazoke, ibawe amazizo, wompharati. Nia konjelwa kenge scharba, ukti nila tewenu amazizo. Gandi, gu kakacheke kulu, uksuganiisa, ukti, umsabenzwa owenza wa i komite enga pambi wetule. Umsabenzwa onga tindani na lo komite ieskachana, ekalene nogu, chukulula iskachana, 25, somteto segele. I komite le yo, se yamgele, iamgele amazizo, wompharati, ngeseke pele kole, epalamende le. Nia konjelwa kenge scharba, ukti, nizognigelewa ituba, lo ukti nkulume. I komite atoma ngo glalela amazizo, wompharati, gwatinkendwe ndifoga, wundwe ndisix March, balalela amazizo, wompharati, ngehlilo lelelbizwa ngo ukti litunge leluano le video, namka izum. Le lishanda lestatu lapo kukanjelwa indawesu genego, uzo guzo abantu, abazo kuluma, mparati, nibabega amazizo wabo, i komite ilalele, bese ia waga dangisa, amazizo lao. Utslatulule uma, uslalo, ukti, uzo gubane mi zombe, yo ku kuluma. Ummzombe, ummundu ngamunye uzo kulumu, nizognigelewa imizuzu emtatu. Uktu kulume, uktu yasegele, umchamo lo, oshongoswago, namka ausegele, ubege inzatu zako. Ungaliwalike ukti imizuzu emtatu, ogenzaloko. Uchapuluke ukuluma, ngelimi onga kuluma ngalo, gliza kshatulula. Sia konjelwa kuto ukti, sibegezelelane, gunkenze ngomunda be ngumbono, ochaisana ne kolelo, ne gambiso yami, nofa nagunjalo asimlalele simnigele indrebe, ukuzeke kambuje. Ogoktrina uslalo akandelele kulu, gubana, ilungele loktata ipasha, lingatoma ngichona kumaspala. Omaspala gunkenze kaboni inaka etile, abone ukti, angaysabenzis uktomi project, okshaliswa wabantu. Ngakoke ufkanela kubenenjele, nomteto osegeleloko. Ingakoko umchamo, abesa abakanba ngao lo, umteto mlingwa. Umnope ukti, gubenenjele shatululago yoktata inaka, kuto, gubenenjele fanaago, gumikaka yo keyo mbuso ekona, ogumundu alandele indrele, zagwenza kbelula, ukti, utatwe inaka, ngapandje wesngepeselu. Amakosi, illangano ze politiki, illangano zamele wompharati, nenlangano ze sekolo, zmeni wesoke. Ukti, zizo kveza, amazizo. Thank you, slalo.
We are going to start now, we'll start with that row. Please raise your hand. Number 1, wait, yes. Number 2. Number 3, yes, number 4, number 5, number 6, number 7, at the end. Okay, we come to the second row. Number 8, na, na, ngasimba, yeah, uh-uh, yeah, number 8, yes, number 9, and then, this is number 10, yes. All those that have stickers, they must come in front, guy.
Napabani kere ngisankwa, namangenzwa mtsuniana ngapambi, wazo talaklesi ndulo, havalungsaloso.
A reminder, you are given 3 minutes only, we will indicate. We will indicate. We will indicate when you exit the three minutes and tell you that your time is up.
Nigele mzuzu emtatu wa pela oculunya nasale mzuzu umzuzu emtatu le ipelile. Guza gubane ndela emni zake ngiswami cha wengai ukiip iskatsakoso kuluma spelile.
You are free to speak in any of the eleven official languages. Uskaze, just tell us your name and then which organization.
Uchoi Kamalako mesangano oycha melego.
Thank you Chairperson. Thank you Chairperson. Thank you Chairperson. My name is Lucas Nusana Matenge. I'm the Chairperson of Municipal Forum, TPSA for Disabled People. Chairperson, I want to thank you for this opportunity today. You came here about the land without compensation. I've been seeing this every time on TV all along when I'm sitting at my house. Sitting and thinking about, what is this about? But I'm happy today you came here. In Kwamshanga, Tembisiile, I'm happy you came here and you find me. Here, I want to talk about this. Ma'am Speaker Chairperson. I want to talk about this. To ask us about this kind of a question. It's like you're asking us, do you want food or no? Do you want food or no? Chairperson, we eat from the land. We eat from the soil. We eat from the soil. We don't eat no way. We have no way to go and eat. When we have food, it's from the land. It's from the soil. The soil where I was born, on it. I was born on the land to sit on the land. And I was born to drink water. And I was born to life. If a person asked me about the land, I'm worried because God put me on the land and gives me water and tells me, my son, use the soil. Use the soil to be have, to have your food. And I'm using the soil to have food. If you ask me, do you want soil or not? To me, it's intimidation. Just give me the land, please, madam. Give the people land. Do not ask them any question. Because land is where you got food from. Can I ask you one question? Is there anyone making food today? No. Where do you belong? You belong to the shop right and all those. Do you know where those food are coming from? No. Why don't you make food in your own? Give a person a land to make food on his own so that he can have his own cattle? So that he can have his own animal? Please, ladies and gentlemen, you are opposing God. I'm here to tell this parliament, you are opposing God and God will make miracle. You won't see the way, where are you going? I'm here to tell you this today. Please, give the people a land, do not even ask them. Because the food is.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you very much Chairperson. My name is Faitama Hero. I'm from Emalachi in Sabreji. And I'm also a member of the EFF. I'm here to reiterate the position of the EFF which is I'm a member of in good standing. Chairperson, we we made our submission into Parliament Public Hearings on the land question. We had told Parliament to go and amend section twenty-five of the Constitution. We are concerned that expropriation bill that we want us to make input on is legislation that must tell us. Now that the Constitution allows for expropriation of all land without compensation. This is how the state is going to expropriate land. This is how the state is going to distribute all land equally. This is, this is our right to use the land is going to be protected. But since you are here, you must know that our position remains the same. We want all the land to be expropriated without compensation. This is only way we will address colonial land dispossession and the legal software day. We did not give Parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and should not be forsaken. The expropriation bill is a necessary distraction. And we see it as a way to hijack the struggle for black people and will not solve the challenges of land. The money that is available to pay for land must be given to black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, to build houses. Build business and expropriation bill is going to help us in doing any of these things. No legislation is a part of the Constitution. Thank you Chairperson.
Thank you Chairperson, my name is. Thank you Chairperson. My name is David Swanani and I'm from the DA. What would like to see happening is a bill that will give a right to people to own the land and have the title deed. What is the use for us to, 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 to give government an opportunity to take the land from those that own the land without any compensation? Want it be, I open up for, for, for abuse like politicians taking the land and targeting those that are producing, you know, food on that land? What we are seeing currently, where we stay, it's a land taken by the people. And then that was allocated for schools. Are we gonna use this piece of legislation to demolish all the houses that are built in, 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 in the land that was allocated for schools? And not compensate them? Because somebody might have given them the right to go and build, you know, their houses in a land that was allocated for schools. And what we're seeing if, if you are using the road, just along the Monota Road. There's people that have erected structures there and they run businesses. So if that piece of land is needed, are you going to say we are taking this land and not compensate that particular person? It will be unfair. What we want is a bill that will give people ownership of the land. Why are we not having title deeds for the land where we have built our houses? We came in Flaklakde number one in nineteen seventy-nine. But today we don't have title deeds. And we are over twenty years into democracy. And yet we still don't have title deeds. Is it because we needed a, a, a piece of legislation like the one we are crafting today? In order for us to have title deeds? No. And what will happen i- 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 is, 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 is a land will be taken from those that are being targeted. And politicians and, and officials will likely to benefit a lot. And poor people in the street will still suffer, like what we are seeing today. Because there are people that own the land as we speak, but there's no production there. And people, in fact, some of the farmers are being served with letters to say that land will be taken. Is that what we want to see? Because those people still have what we call permission to occupy. Instead of giving them a, 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 a title deed so that they can go and raise funds somewhere and generate an income for them and their families. What we want is for the, is for the government to have a right to take the land without compensation. Something is not right here. Unless otherwise we do the right thing, we start off by giving title deeds to those who are owning the land where they've built their houses. Thank you.
Togo zempati chelo. Ikamalaminginu taimonduli, kishala konala pete visile. Nguyavuti eyi. Eh, inro esiba wago. De Karen. Oh, sorry. Eh, ikamalaminginu taimonduli, nguyavuti eyi, I'm from Tembisiile Municipality. Eh, inro esiba wago. Eh, ukiip. Abanru. Aba bushe umshaba wabo. Sifuna ama title deed. Asifuni ukipathelwa, gu government umshab. For an example, if gunamala ashe lapasalakona kishale saitin lapalema i. Kamanyamba kamenifunu ngjelo ukiip umshaba loyo axi ngoami. Guzo kfiga i kataplaara, ifige isuse inro ami. Eh, because of ama investors ne government agreement. Gifunu ba directly involved ku mineral no ba ku welti yami ne abanroba mi ngoba konba chela itatledit. Ju tu i capacity ngio enzo ukiip i government ifele ge conflict of interest ya ma ofisali na ma politi xie. Eno wasta. Ukiip boke abanigazo umshaba bo trechwa ngo five years ngo ba abafandaro. There is no mentorship ba ba trepil ukiip ba zo kthat umshaba loyo. Sititina de Karen, Bill, gibona ingio e violate ama right wabanu. Sifuna ama ta, sifuna umnigas, one rulei, agube one rulei. I government inga ngene shangananenrabazam, these are injele investors yam. Thank you very much.
Greetings. My name is Daniel Nduli. I'm a member of the DA and I'm from Tembisiile Hani Municipality. My request is that people should be granted title deeds. And not that government should hold custody of the land. An example that Babantuli gives, if he has a coal mine in his area, he would like to be directly involved and not, eh, not be as a, a victim of conflict of interest, as it will be the case with politicians and offici- and officials. Babantuli insists that the current bill violates the rights of people. Because people are sometimes given land for about five years, they are not given entitlement in terms of documentation. And people, when they fail, then the land gets taken away from them. So this bill doesn't help, but only if people can be given title deeds. Issues that happen within the Nduli household should remain Nduli matter and nobody else's. Thank you.
My name is Adilat Mukuenaa. While I've been partly covered by the colleagues who have spoken before me, but I also want to emphasize that I should be a rightful owner and permanent owner of the land where I stay and I don't want government control over it. I want to leave a legacy for my generation and be an owner. Thank you.
Okay, Sanbonan, Dimelan, everyone. My name is John Divan, I'm from Democratic Alliance. Yes, what can I say about the bill today? Let me start about what I hear the Chairperson said later. The government wants to build schools, clinics, eh, and other public buildings. Yes, it's good, it is, this is, eh, the responsibility of, eh, the government. The government must build those structures. But what I want to speak about like the resources. Like China, China is here in South Africa is digging the resources, diamonds, gold, all those things. After they dig all those resources, they transport all those resources to their, their own countries. Our people in our land, in South Africa, what are their benefits? Because all those resources, they go to their own countries. We must also check in our land, why they don't have got their own equipment, working tools, to dig all those resources in our land to assist our people in our land. Yes, I hear my colleagues here that are talking about title deeds. Yes, it's true. Like now, myself, I'm worried, I haven't got a title deed where I'm staying. And that piece of land where I'm staying, I've done a lot. There's a house there in that piece of land. There is many things. Cattle, cars, everything. According to my understanding about this bill, it's about to take all my properties that I have. Because I haven't got a title deed. What will happen if I die tomorrow or, or anytime? Because they, 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 eh, I can die anytime. And that piece of land, I don't own it until I have got a, a title deed. Yes. Yes, my fellow brothers and sisters. I know each and everyone today is here to know about, eh, 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 what, what, how, how far is the government about our, our title deeds? Especially here in Mpumalanga. Since we are here, we are still waiting to know what will happen to us. But if you go here around here, people takes lands. Eh, our, our land here around, if you check, there's no business that is taking place, nothing. And our municipalities, most of our municipalities here, we don't know what is happening about all those lands that are here around. Thanks.
Chairperson and everyone else from Parliament, Avshen. My name is Ishman Betse and I'm with the Democratic Alliance. Chairperson, the issue that we are discussing here today, the expropriation bill, as we have been discussing it over the past couple of days all across our province. As a Democratic Alliance, we have fundamental differences in opposition to what the provisions of this bill are. In the main, this bill does not adequately or satisfactorily define what property relates to. You have given everyone in this room this pamphlet. This pamphlet says explicitly that land is not limited to property. This now means that if you are to forge ahead and expropriate someone's property, you can be expropriating someone's car, you can be expropriating someone's cellphone, you can be expropriating someone's clothes, whatever it is. But you say that the purposes of expropriation are if it is for public purpose or for public good. Quite plainly and quite simply, Chairperson, how will it help, how will it be for public purpose if you expropriate someone's car? And it then comes into your custodianship? There are two issues that we also need for you to define for us. Custodianship versus ownership. If the state expropiates land or anything and takes it into its own custodianship, it means that automatically it does not belong to anyone. That automatically also fends off any investment that could possibly come into the country because no one has title to that particular land, even if it is in your custodianship as the state. I would also like to speak on what this pamphlet also says that property can be expropriated by any competent authority. It can be the national government, it can be provincial government, it can be local government, it can even be the master of the high court. But my question is, what competence does the court have to expropriate land? What competence does the local government have to expropriate land? I'll give you an example. Up north in Bombela, here in Mpumalanga, the municipality gave away parcels of land and resettled people on them. But this is good arable land, land that should actually be used. But this is good arable land, land that should actually be used for agricultural purposes. However, the municipality saw fit to place people there instead of using that land for agricultural purposes. In any case, chairperson, if you are going to expropriate land now and redistribute it to people, why is that not linked to a program to train people on how to farm? You give a person land now, many hectares of land, land that is currently being farmed productively, but the person does not know how to farm. Is that not doing a disservice to yourself as a government and also to the people to whom you give this land to? Why aren't there any programs that you're also rolling out to give people the capacity to farm the land which you're going to expropriate and give over to them? Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Petras Vincent Nduli. I'm the chairperson of Tembissile Hani Youth Organization and a member of EFF. The position of Tembissile Youth Organization and the party that I represent is stated as follows. Chairperson, we do not understand why the parliament is spending money on these processes when there is a process to amend the constitution and then after amend the constitution, this committee must bring legislation information by the constitution. We made our submission in parliament, public hearing on the land question. And we are told members of parliament to go amend the constitution to allow expropriation of land, of, expropriation of land without compensation into the custody of the state. We are concerned, the expropriation bill that you want us to make, that you want us to make input on, is legislate, in legislation, that must tell us. Now that the constitution allows the expropriation of all land without compensation, this is how the state is going to expropriate land, this is how the land is going to be distributed, distributed all, everyone equally, and this is how right to use the land is going to be protected. But since you are here, you must know that the position remains the same. We want all land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address colonial land dispossession, dispossession and the legacy of the apartheid. We did not give the parliament a mandate to give way to pay for the land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and should not be saved. The expropriation bill is unnecessary destruction and we see it as a way to hijack the real struggle of a black people and we not solve the challenges of the land. The money that is available to pay the land must be given back to black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land farm, build houses and build businesses. And expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of this. No legislation is above the constitution, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chairperson. My name is Lindilam Konto, I'm representing the EFF. Chairperson, we do not understand why the parliament is spending so much money on this process when there is a process to amend the constitution and then after amending the constitution. This committee must bring as legislation informed by the constitution. We made our submissions in two parliament public hearings on the land question. And we were told members of the parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow the expropriation of land without compensation into the custody of the state. We are concerned that the expropriation bill that you want us to make input on is legislation that must tell us. Now that the constitution allows for expropriation of all land without compensation, this is how the state is going to expropriate the land. This is how the land is going to be distributed and all, everyone equally. And this is how our right to use the land is going to be protected. But since you are here, you must know that the position remains the same. We want all the land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address this colonial dispossession and the legacy of the apartheid. We did not give the parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and should not be in any way forsaken. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary destruction and we see it as a way to hijack the real struggles of black people and will not solve any of the challenges of the land. The money that is available to pay the land must be given to black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm. Black people in South Africa need their land to build houses and to build businesses and the expropriation of the bill is not going to help us in doing any of this. No legislation is above the constitution, thank you, Chairperson.
Angiatogoza, angiatogoza. Ake nglochise ngumashangu, u nguchwele masangu, obuya gu Democratic Alliance. Ngifuna ugulethanaku msniani, ngisoguva msniani, ngendla desmanga. U guti, i government, i government isosropa emini, ifunu kusrope emini, ilanga lela, ngakeke, ngakeke. Njenga njenga, ngishulega, u tikitole ita title deed, ya wami, ya wamo, u tiki. Ube naniksasa, labandwaba, and then inaba zuti land, funakthata ama land without compensation. I can make an example, u ne indawala is negi, I can mention like, like si Abusua. Indawala ebis owner, ebis owner government. All those lands are the successors and there was a lot of job opportunity. And then maji, yinidwesosa, changea maji, u guti, they can have their land and then elonwe ibo. And asegaleni, enyindo, ndebeli. Funa, iskaa tima, so guti, nibone u guti, kache kache siyapi maji. I government liskiyo, iland, sifuna u ona ama land, sifunu u ona tinas, oni umshaba wetu, umshaba uya amakosi. And ngengeke, ngengeke, kuzo kuchige logo, amakosi maji, abegule ngapandla, and then is government, front. Undebeli iskaa, so guti maji, abone u guti, this South Africa siyapi ngayo. Thank you.
My name is Juel Masangu, I'm a member of the DA. Shortly, I just want to say, the idea around this expropriation bill is just daylight robbery by government. I need my own title deed. And there are so many places like around Siabusuwa which were once owned by government and today they lie, they lie, desolate. So it's time now that we see in South Africa as to where we are going. And it is time to rope in Amakosi because many places that are owned by Amakosi are neglected and Amakosi are left out of the picture, thank you.
Siabonga. Eh, kubobonga batetile, thank you. Eh, I would like to also acknowledge Honorable Mbumishope, who is an MPL in the Mpumalanga Legislature from the Ains. We also have Honorable Dikele Di Masangu. She's with us from Cape Town but serving in the SOP. Maybe she's outside. We have a delegation from the Kontralesa, eh, Namakosi. Eh, we have Uprince Rony Malala, who is leading the National Youth Wing as the coordinator in Mpumalanga. Eh, eh, thank you. Where I'm coming from, the, Amakosi don't stand up, so you can just raise your hand where you are. Eh, we have Uprince Olifant Masangu, who is the chairperson of Kontralesa in Gangala Region. Siabonga. We have Udoctor Jali Mahfumba Na, is the secretary of the Youth Wing in Mpumalanga Province. Eh, we also have Mndanengosi Uupondo. Siabonga baba, Nobaba Uumatunsi. Siabonga. Siabonga kakulu that our traditional leadership has joined us. We are in the third row now. Eh, those that would like to speak, can you please raise your hands, row number three? Okay, eh, okay, you are number one. Number two, yes. Number three. Number four. Number five. Join this row if you want us to, number five, give number five to him, no, yeah, yeah, yes, you, yeah. Number six. Yes, number seven. No, the lady in front of him, yes. Number eight. Uputi, yeah. No, we are in this row, we are in this row, we are in this row, we are here now. This is number nine. This is number 10. So we will, we will finish this row in the second round. We, we appeal to our security guys by the door. Anyone who's coming must join the rows that we have not yet pointed to. And again, as you can see that there are many people outside. We will allow them to come in groups of ten so that they can speak when we are through with the last row. If someone comes in and joins that row, we won't point to that person because we have passed that row. We, we, we will allow Amakosi eh, at the right end to, to present. Eh, so you may not raise your hands now, we will ask you later on to come in.
Uslalo uchi banen, gabandwaba ngapandla, aba funu ngenanaboba zo kuluma. Ngakoba za nande baban genisa ngabaluchumi ngabaluchumi nchano. Uslalo yaba wago u guti, Amakosi azaknigela itu ba ngekune u guti na uavesa mazizo wago.
Niaboa, Chairperson. Chairperson, I just want to indicate the fact that we did not give parliament a mandate to find ways for land that was stolen, to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity, Chair, and it should not be forsaken. Chairperson, the expropriation bill is an unnecessary destruction and we see it as a way to hijack the real struggles of black people. And we will, and it will, it will not solve the challenges of the land that we are facing in the country. Chair, and also the money that is available to pay for this land according to the bill, I think that it must also be given, it must be given to black small-scale farmers. And again, Chair, we as black people in South Africa, we need our land. Want to build houses, build businesses, and the expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. So Chair, no legislation is above the constitution. Eh, we did not, we did not, we, it is for the second time we are having something like this. So Chair, please, finding us frustrating, frustrating process, you want our land back. This thing of this bill, actually, it was not supposed to be, we were not supposed to be having this conversation today. If really, parliament and the ruling party, if really you were serious on the question of land, Chair, thank you.
Can we please get your name, please? We need your name.
Thank you very much, my name is Gabriel Mattecola, I'm coming from the EFF. Chairperson, as the EFF, we don't understand why parliament is spending money on this useless process when there is a process to amend the constitution. And after amending the constitution, this committee must bring us legislation informed by the constitution. We made our submission in two parliament public hearings on the land question. And we told members of parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation into the custody of the state. As the EFF, we are concerned that the expropriation bill that you want us to put, to make input on, is legislation that must tell us. Now that the constitution allows for expropriation of land without compensation, this is how the state is going to expropriate land. This is how the land is going to be distributed to everyone equally. And this is how our right to use the land is going to be protected. Chairman, Chairperson, since you are here, you must know that the position of the EFF remains the same. We want all land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address the colonial land dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. We did not give parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and should not be forsaken. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary, is an unnecessary destruction and we see it as a way to hijack the real struggle of black people and will not solve the challenges of land. The money that is available to pay for land must given to black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses and build businesses. And the expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. No legislation, Chairperson, is above the constitution, thank you very much.
Eh, ikamalamu uneli masombuka, ngi member of EFF, eh, provincial treasurer, and also ngi kanzala le dokta Che S. Moroka. Eh, we don't, we did, we didn't give parliament. We didn't give Parliament a mandate to find way to pay the land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity or should not be for sale. We don't understand why Parliament is spending money on this process where there is a process amended Constitution and thereafter amending Constitution. This committee must bring the legislation informed by the Constitution. Si submitile, goo 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 goo, Parliament are hearing Ukuti. Falele Nhambe, no amanda, le 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 hearing. Ukuti, nisangasangani swainle Parliament, we don't understand what dealing king are in. We are concerned that expropriation bill that you want us to make input on this legislation that must tell us now that the Constitution allows the expropriation of the land without compensation. This is how the state is going to expropriate land. This land is how the land is going to be distributed every equity and this is how our right to use the land is going to be processed. But since you are here, you must know that our position remains the same. Our position remains the same. We want all the land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address the colonial land dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction and we see it all the way to hijack the real struggle of the black people and will not solve the challenges of land. The money that is available to pay the land must be given to the black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, but build houses and build businesses expropriation bill is not going to help us doing any of this. No legislation is above the Constitution. Hambadi no lungis.
Ms. Nellima Somboga, Provincial Treasurer of the EFF and municipal council member. They submitted a submission to Parliament to amend the expropriation bill. We don't understand your confusion, please go and fix.
I am Zakaria Malek from Snotlelo, from the PAC organization. So to this question of land, expropriation without the land, as the Pan-African Corps of Azania were very clear, very simple because we have been formed upon over the question of land. So I'll be very short. As I'm saying, our message is very simple. Even though we don't understand this expropriation, but we'll support for the sake of we need land because this is not our language, expropriation of land without compensation. Our language is we repossess. Because once we say you expropriate land without compensation, we open for discussion and then with semblance, you take something which doesn't belong to you. So the land belongs to us as the African people. God went created this land, created Europa for the Europeans, Asia for the Asians, Africa for the Africans. So we wonder why these white people, baleba silala watla, watlaka kana kama Africa bachiya, na kaya re. So our message is very simple, Parliament here. Please, we need land, we need this land. There's no way we can, because when we talk about land, we talk about the minerals, the resources. Zelo ne shansar narlama Africa, repel ozo. Bano refer na kaya re na. Expropriation, we support just because, ki onetla kala tuko Parliament, because our opposition go re, repossess. Why should we expropriate? Even also re ntllo, baleba ufan tllo apala, we patel waro, ufan kulua apala, we patel. Are we expropriated? Are we expropriated by repossess? So our message is very simple, clear. I don't want to waste time, give us our land back. Otherwise, we'll take arm, we need it by force.
We are talking about the resources that we as Africans were supposed to be living with. In fact, we need our land back, you must give us our land back. We are not expropriating, we are repossessing what is ours.
Tabel. Kenua Matzimela from Motembe City. Chairperson, we do not understand why Parliament is spending money on this process when there is a process to amend the Constitution and thereafter amending the Constitution. This committee must bring a legislation informed by Constitution. We made our submission into Parliament Public Hearings on the land question and we told members of Parliament to go and amend the Constitution to allow the expropriation of land, of all South African land without compensation into the custodian of the state. We are concerned that expropriation bill that you want us to make input on is legislation that must tell us now that the Constitution allow for expropriation of all land without compensation. This is how the state is going to expropriate land. This is how the land is going to be distributed to everyone equally and this is how our right to use the land is going to be protected. But since you are here, you must know that our position remain the same. We want all land to be expropriated without any compensation. This is the only way we will address the colonial land dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. We did not give Parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for a land that was stolen from us. Our land is not a commodity and should not be for sale. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction and we see it as a way to hijack the real struggles of black people and will not solve the challenges of land. The money that is available to pay for land must be given to black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses, build businesses and the expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. No legislation is above the Constitution. I thank you.
Mtenisalo, ma parliamentarians, labase legislature, na ma local municipalities, nempaga tuonke nganbengela, luka malami ngongbongmusa, Masalela. I represent any political party, ni tela esbongmusa. Niokalala, number one. I understand that looking at the age difference, ya labanlabala, gulele olenamus. It tells you is significant, yuguti i land, gumede i buye, ebandwe. It tells you, uguti si itata serious, ganga ganaani, this. Because when you look at our age groups, you'll find, gunema pensioners, lala, ati the land is needed. Guney youth, iti the land is needed. And then niokalala. I land, gumedeskales understand, uguti itse tefanjanjan. The people had a plan, gune prude pond, Africaner prude pond. Be ban e plan, ugo spenda ngan e land. We don't, I understand, we are all excited now, we taking the land, we taking the land. I can't mince my words, this thing in a kala i land. We know white people, bane land, esandeni sabo. I land, imajority i land, is esandeni sabo. When you raise that, you'll be told that the traditional leadership in a land and the reality, good ground, ayshonjal. I land, masi itse, le, this spiritlessness, I think you must come back to us. Niti, what do we do with this land? Look at China. China have been having their land for a long time, 1949, from 1949. But ekonomie e China, uguti abonagal, it's early 2000, uguti, what their plan? Do we really have the plan? As young people, we have that plan. The problem is that you are 400 in Parliament and the other houses. The ideas, after you have taken this land, come back to us. Because when you look at this bill, chapter five, ukchela, chapter five, if you go to chapter five, it talks about compensation after the expropriation. Why do I have to compensate i land that has unjustly benefited someone? The people took this land not thinking about us. Every time we want to bring a solution, we leave that singa itse re, ensoogo. Bonna, they, the people who are currently controlling the land have been making i pro-
My name is Masalela, I came here as a resident, not as any political affiliate. Number one, we're looking at the age difference of people gathered here, the elderly and then the youth, that alone tells us how big the outcry is to have our land back. Africaners had plans to do with the land. We know the land mostly is owned by whites. Who had plans to do with the land? Even where chiefs are said to be owning land, reality says otherwise that the whites are the owners of the land. The youth we have here is testimony to that, I thank you.
Tutuzilem twen, tutuzilem twen from EFF. Chairperson, we do not understand why Parliament is spending money on this process when there is a process to amend their Constitution. And then after amending the Constitution, this committee must bring us legislation informed by Constitution. We made our submission into Parliament Public Hearing on the Land Question and we told members of Parliament, we got Parliament to go and amend their Constitution to allow for expropriation of all land without compensation into the custody of the state. Number three, we are concerned that the expropriation bill that you want us to make input on this legislation that must tell us now that their Constitution allow for expropriation of all is, of all land without compensation. This is how the state is going to expropriating land. This is how the land is going to be distributed, all everyone equally. And this is how our right to use the land is going to be protected. Number four, but since you are here, you must know that our position remain the same. We want all land to be expropriating without compensation. This is the only way we will address colonial land dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. Number five, we did not give Parliament mandate to find way to pay the land that was stolen, our land is not our commodity and should not be for sale. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction and we see it is a way to hijack the real struggle of black people and will not solve the challenge of land. The money that is available to pay for land must be given black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build house and build business and expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. No legislation is above Constitution, thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson. All protocol observed. My name is Richard Baoka. I represent the PAC in Bumalanga. I'm the Provincial Chairperson. I am also the Deputy Chairperson of Motwanin Trust, which are the claimants of the land. I'm also a counselor in Dr. J.S. Moroka. Let me get into the business of the day. Chairperson, expropriation bill, as the PAC, we support it. But although the coining or the wedding as the PAC, we did not agree from the onset, but we will support it. What we said as the PAC or what we are saying as well, the land was stolen in 1652. Now, if something is stolen, when you get it back, you don't expropriate, you repossess, you take it back. Now, that is our language, the PAC will always say repossession of the land. But given the fact that expropriation for now is the term, we'll support it because we will support anything that will bring the land back to our African masses, whether it's expropriation or whatever way. So as the PAC will support the bill, but we are still saying the whole land must be repossessed. Now, I want to thank you as Parliament and take this opportunity to inform you that from the side of Motwanin, because I said I'm also Deputy Chairperson of Motwanin Trust, let me take this opportunity to say, Parliament, the government gave us land, it's 217JR. Farm 217JR, Ankel Durang 217JR. We have made projects on that farm, we are farming on that land. But unfortunately, with great respect, our traditional leadership are now confiscating that land, cutting our fences, destroying our shacks and putting in invaders there. So I want to bring it to Parliament for attention that the land that you gave us to develop and grow food and improve the economy, the traditional leadership is taking it at Moloto. Maybe some of you who are familiar, when you go towards Pretoria, after Kwamisanga, you look on your left and right, you'll see lot of shacks developing there. That is invasion orchestrated by our traditional leadership. So this is what I'm giving you to go along and also put it in Parliament. Say thank you as Motwanin, we've got the land, but now the land is being taken by invaders and the chiefs, thank you.
Amanda. Mai buye. Amanda. Thank you, Chairperson. There are nine points that we are going to add on today. My name is Tabelo Kekeana, a resident from Tembe City, a member of EFF, a public representative in the municipality. Point number one, Chairperson, we don't understand why Parliament is spending money on this process when there is a process to amend Constitution and after amending the Constitution, the committee must bring us legislation informed by the Constitution. We made our submission into Parliament Public Hearings on the Land Question and we told members of Parliament to go and amend the Constitution to allow for expropriation of all land without compensation. of all land without compensation into custody of the state. Number three, we are concerned that expropriation bill that you want us to make input on is legislation that must tell us now that the constitution allowed for expropriation of all land without compensation. This is how the state is going to expropriate land. This is how the land is going to be distributed, all, all everyone equally. And this is how our right to use the land is going to be protected. But since we are here, you must know that our position remain the same. We want all land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address colonial land dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. We did not give parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and should not be forsaken. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction. And we see it as a way to hijack the real struggle of black people and will not solve the challenges of land. The money that is available to pay for the land must be given to black small-scale farmers. Number eight, black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses, build businesses. An expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. Number nine, no legislation is above constitution. Chairperson. Umasiti sifunum chab. As if uni is stand, because I heard members of Anyawa Kulmane Title D.
Thank you. Okay. Chairperson, we want our land back. We don't mean stands because some are complaining about the title D. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairperson, my name is Amos Msvi from Wateti. And I'm an EFF member. And there's no apologetic about that. Chairperson, we made our submission into parliament public hearings on the land question. And we told members of our parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow for expropriation of all land without compensation into custody of the state. Chairperson, we do not understand why parliament is spending money on this process when there is a process to amend the constitution. And then after amending the constitution, this committee must bring us legislation informed by the constitution. We are concerned that the expropriation bill that you want us to make input on is legislation that must tell us now that the constitution allows for expropriation of all land without compensation. This is how the state is going to expropriate land. This is how the land is going to be distributed, all everyone equally. And this is how our right to use the land is going to be protected. But since you are here, you must know that our position remains the same. We want all land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address colonial land dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. We did not give parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and should not be forsaken. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction. And we see it as a way to hijack the real struggles of black people and will not solve the challenge of land. The money that is available to pay for land must be given to black small-scale farmers. I thank you.
Black people in South Africa need their land to plough and to live with and build businesses. The expropriation won't help them with anything. I thank you.
We have presented the views of their parties and individuals, but would like to acknowledge the following. Leadership of the EFF in the province. Ufaita Neli Masombuka, who is the provincial treasurer. Thank you. The provincial chairperson of the PAC in Mpumalanga, Ukumre Urichat Maoka. He was our first speaker, Seabongakaku. In this row, we will give them the chance to speak. You are number one? Yes. Number two? Number three? Number four? Number five? Six? Seven? And Gokombe, I've not yet pointed at you. Okay, nine? Yes. So no one here? We go to this row then. Number ten? Okay. We point at you and then say you must come. So if we have not, please remain in your seat. Please note this. For example, we are in this row now and we are not yet through with this row. If it happens that you come in, since I having already pointed people in that particular row, we don't go back to that row. The reason I said we are in this row, it's because Ufaita Loulapangapambil was the last one. So at no stage that we would go to that row. We'll have to continue with this row. Then this one, we are here now. If you would like to speak and we miss you somehow or somewhere, please come to these three rows that I've not yet pointed at. Please.
My name is Seabongas Gula. I'm representing the Economic Freedom Fighters. Chairperson, we do not understand why parliament is spending money on this process when there is a process to amend the constitution. And then after amending the constitution, this committee must bring us legislation informed by the constitution. We made our submissions into parliamentary public hearings on the land question. And we told members of parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow for expropriation of all land without compensation into the custody of the state. We are concerned that the expropriation bill that you want us to make input on is legislation that must tell us that now the constitution allows for expropriation of all land without compensation. This is how the state is going to expropriate land. This is how the land is going to be distributed to everyone equally. And this is how our right to use the land is going to be protected. But since you are here, you must know that our position remains the same. We want all land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address colonial land dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. We did not give parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and should not be forsaken. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction. And we see it as a way to hijack the real struggles of black people and will not solve the challenges of land. The money that is available to pay for the land must be given to black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses and build businesses. The expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. No legislation is above the constitution. Thank you.
My name is Busisiwa Shiburi. I'm from the Economic Freedom Fighters. Chairperson, we do not understand why the parliament is spending money on these processes when there is a process to amend the constitution. And then after amending the constitution, the committee must bring a legislation informed by the constitution. But since you are here, you must know that our position is still the same. We want all the land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address the colonization of dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. We did not give parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for the land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and should not be forsaken. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction. And we see it as a way to hijack the real struggle of our black people. And we will not solve the challenges of the land. The money that is available to pay for the land must be given to black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses, build businesses. And the expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of those things. And if we can see clearly, Chairperson, the concern maybe that's why we are deliberating on the issue, it's because you don't understand the importance of land to black people. That's why we see even our illegal evictions, where black people are evicted illegally. So people are struggling because of land. The land is very important, especially in the dignity of a black person. And if you are questioning yourself in this land issue, what are the black people going to do with the land? You must ask yourself, who is working in the farms of white people? It's the black people who are working there. The white farmers are just owners of the farms. So give us our own land so we can farm and be able to see our products and that we can produce and uplift the black people so that our dignity and respect can remain as black people. And that mentality of saying that people are lazy, black people are lazy to think and to work, we are very hard workers. It's a proof that we are working in those farms and those farms are producing good products because of the black people, not because of the white people. The white people are just giving us material to use, to work with. So there is no legislation that is above the constitution. Thank you.
Chairperson, we do not understand why the parliament is spending money on this process when there is a process to amend the constitution and thereafter amending the constitution. This committee must bring us legislature informed by the constitution too. We made our submission into parliament public hearings on the land question. And we told members of parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow the appropriation of land without compensation into the custody of the state. Three, we make concern that the expropriation bill that you want us to make input on is legislature that must tell us now that the constitution allows for expropriation of all land without compensation. This is how the state is going to expropriate land. This is how the land is going to be distributed, all everyone equally. And this is how our right to use land is going to be protected. But since you are here, you must know that our position remains the same. We want all land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address colonial land dispossession and the land of apartheid. We did not give parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and should not be forsaken. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction. And we see it as a way to hijack the real struggle of black people and will not solve the challenges of land. The money that is available to pay for land must be given to black small farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses and build businesses. And the expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. No legislature is above the constitution. I thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson. My name is Jackson Malachi, a member of the Economic Freedom Fighters and also a regional command team member of Ngangala, a public representative in Dr. J.S. Moroka. Chairperson, we do not understand why parliament is spending money on this process when there is a process to amend the constitution. And then after amending the constitution, this committee must bring a legislation informed by the constitution. We made our submission into parliament public hearings on the land question. And we told members of parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation into the custody of the state. We are concerned that the expropriation bill that you want us to make input on its legislation that must tell us now that the constitution allows expropriation of land without compensation. This is how the state is going to expropriate land. This is how the land is going to be distributed to all, to all everyone equally. And this is how our right to use the land is going to be protected. But since you are here, you must know that our position remain the same. We want all land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address colonial and land dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. We did not give parliament mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. That was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and should not be forsaken. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction. And we see it as a way to hijack the real struggle of black people and will not solve the challenge of land. The money that is available to pay for land must be given to black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses and build business. And expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. No legislation is above the constitution. Thank you.
Just before you speak, we have a challenge. People want to come inside. We humbly appeal to row number one, number two, number three, number four. Even those that are outside to come in. We're still going to give them a chance to speak. We're still going to give them a chance to speak. Mama? Puti weti PSA. Puti weti PSA. We are asking that most we have not yet accepted any new person from outside. This row, we are reserving this row for Amakosi Kontralessa. This row. This one. We have removed everyone. One, two, three, four. Can you please join that side? Amakosi, this row. Kontralessa, this row. Leadership. Isualetu, you can join this side. And then can the security then assist us? Those that they will be allowing to come in, refer to the these four rows. Can you please start in the first row? Yes, please, 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 Bogoto. Those that are coming in, they must first fill the first row, the second row. Yeah, just like that. And can we please, when they are coming in, they must come in quietly. Please. You may start now.
I am a member of the ANC and I'm representing the ANC. Chair, we want to indicate that as the ANC, we support the expropriation of property and land. And we are saying this is a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both the access to property and land. And that this expropriation of such without compensation is part of the process, as we have indicated. We are saying this process for the ANC is about addressing the historical injustices and the dispossession of the black majority of their property and land. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock the growth, the redistribution of assets and promote social economic transformation. Chair, we want to further indicate that we are guided by our resolutions, which we have taken in our fifty-fourth national conference, which says, I'm going to quote a one paragraph. We have said in quote, "Expropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanism available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution," close quote. We submit as the ANC chair that in line with the constitution of the Republic of South Africa and the property clause, the expropriation bill is the draft law of general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, expropriation of property and land without compensation. We want to further indicate that we support the expropriation bill of 2020 as to redistribute property and land to address the centuries of old national grievance of land and property, which was as a result of the forced dispossession of property and land of our people. We support the framework in the bill in line with the constitution to guide the process and procedures for expropriation of property, including land, by the organs of state. We support in particular clause number twelve C, which allows where expropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and in the republic, in the public interest for property and land which shall have been earmarked for social economic reform and redistribution. We want to further indicate, Chair, that we support in particular clause twelve C, which allows where expropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution, in the public interest for property and land earmarked for social economic reform.
Your time is up.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to greet you all, the Chairperson, the members of parliament, and the community at large, in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. My name is Depostive Skosana, a member of the ANC, who is in good standing. Also from Tembesila Municipality, Nkangala Region, in Pumalanga. I'm also a farmer.
I am Skosana, the ANC member and a farmer in Pumalanga. Chairperson, please pass the message to the powers that be that we haven't plowed or farmed anything due to the lack of land. We live in poverty due to lack of land. We are unable to live or do anything without land. So we are staying in unison. Let our land be back from those that took our land forcefully and without following procedure. Thank you.
From the delegation and also greetings to our leadership in Nkangala Region, Comrade Pidi Masilo. And I must also indicate, Chair, as I am Minister William Skosana, member of the ANC, in good standing under Tembesila Municipality. I support the expropriation bill. I support the expropriation bill of land without compensation. It's because, as we can see, as Africans, as captain listening, we start to tell Omsaba and scurry the apartheid era. And also I must indicate, puti, no Omsaba. National Parliament, puti, Omsaba, wa bandu, abandzima. Ummele ubuyele, ebandun ebandzima. Laba baba kipakona, ummele baba guseli, msabenuabo. And I'm very, puti, under Tembesila Municipality, since Omsaba omneki. La, kune mpeyse kona, ngabala example A one. Under Tembesila, we had a problem, puti, as in now, Omsaba, like Tembesila, in Chola, it is a college, la, isu yakakona. Mlokubuzbezelo, puti, Omsaba, usakindezelo, kiti, amantoba myama. So, amantoba myama, we request you, puti, no Omsaba, ubuye, ubiele, amantoba myama. As the member of the ANC, I support the expropriation of land without compensation.
Dean Williams Skosana from Nkangala Region. Most of the time, our land was taken from us during the apartheid era. It has come back, it has to come back to the people who have sought such land under the Tembesila Municipalities. So much that even the college struggled for a piece of land to be built on. So we say our land must be back to the owners of the land, which was taken from them, which are black people. Thank you.
Libicola Kaki Lucas Mogolu, a member of the EFF in good standing, the councillor under the EFF organization in Tembesila, the local municipality, and also a member of the EFF provincial leadership. Chairperson, kilebogonakuiya, parliamente rotlafah, lefasen laore na la Tembesile, ka processelitlen gayo. Juale, refeila okushisha ore, parliamente ha ne juale, idiya di fina, hotla ore na vatu, ka processe, mola konale processe, ya go amenda the constitution in order to can assist us in expropriation of land without compensation. Juale remaga jele gur, ribile lidi consultation, honamule fasen la Pumalanga, puti, le yo na parliamente ya re. Ra babu cha habu zogore, re na re, expropriation of land without compensation. Re ra ore lefas, alibuele mbatu, kanjela gur, hori, hori, gurwa, baba. Taba hulu ilugur, re leboga maan, oye na libugile maan, re ajia lefas. Taba yu ya magacha, juale ribushia gucha gur na re, kawo re na, singirile hopela gur, lieli o niaki shisha, hori, kitzela ife, ele sanje lidiye, okusha, lefas vatu. Re wela murah, lele parliamente, komedia parliamente, liwabu cha gorre re. Re sa yemi, posishi ni niarina, ya gorre lefas, libuele vatu. Ibele, har okushishi, bilie ya lenaye, gor, ilor tushaka, inga, re bona ili, ilu gote taka takancha. Ele so hulu tatarre, har ikaba, parliamente i bona, honale chelete. E no gur, ya bona la nyan. Parliamente ha itia chelitiyo, ife, bo ra hewo potlana, egaba balimi, kapabali mruwi. Gorre bona, ba honogor, ba hudi she, hewo chabona, ba honogor i pe. Kawo ri allo, ri ala gur, re re, we rally behind the expropriation of land without compensation. Amen.
Thank you, Chairperson. I'm an EFF councillor. Now, I want to thank you for the opportunity given to me. And again, I want to say that we do not understand why there is this process whereas there is a process to to expropriate the land without compensation. Now, we say that or we actually said that the land should be expropriated. And that should be done without any compensation because this land was stolen. Therefore, there should not be any form of compensation. And that is, again, we did not give the government the mandate to make any form of compensation. Now, we say that our position is still the same. It is unchanged. And again, we are saying that the money that the government wants to use for compensation, it should be given to black smallhold farmers so that they can use it for carrying out their farming work. I thank you.
I'm Tebogomalangwe, residing in Dr. Jezz Morocco, ward seven. I am EFF Nkangala Regional Organizer. Chairperson, we do not understand why parliament is spending money on this process when there is a process to amend the constitution. And then after the amending the constitution, this committee must bring as legislation informed by the constitution. We made our submission in two parliament public hearings on that land question. And we told members of parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation into the custody of the state. We are concerned that the expropriation bill that you want us to make input on is legislation that must tell us. Now that the constitution allows the expropriation of all land without compensation, this is how the state is going to expropriate land. This is how the land is going to be distributed to everyone equally. And this is how our right to use the land is going to be protected. But since you are here, you must know that our position remains the same. We want all the land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address colonial land dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. We did not give parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not commodity and should not be forsaken. The expropriation bill is unnecessary distraction. And we see it as the way to hijack the real struggle of black people and will not solve the challenges of land. The money that is available to pay for land must be given to black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses, build businesses, and expropriate. And the expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. No legislation is above the constitution.
Apologies.
Thank you very much. My name is Dina Savangu, from Tembesila, the local municipality. I'm here to reaffirm the position of the EFF as the first cardinal pillar for the land expropriation without compensation. Chairperson, we do not understand why parliament is spending money on this process when there's a process to amend the constitution. And after amending the constitution, this committee must bring as legislation informed by the constitution. We made our submission in parliament public hearings on the land question. And we told members of parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow expropriation of land without compensation into the custody of the state. We are concerned that the expropriation bill that you want us to make input on is legislation that must tell us. Now that the constitution allows expropriation of land without compensation, this is how the state is going to expropriate the land. This is how the land is going to be distributed equally. And this is how our right to use the land is going to be protected. But still, you are here. You must know that our position remains the same. We want all land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address colonial and dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. We did not give parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not Our land is not commodity and should not be perceived. The expropriation bill is unnecessary distraction. We see it as a way to hijack the real struggle of black people with not solving the challenges of the land. The money that is available to pay for the land must be given black-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses, build eh business and expropriation is not going to help us doing of these things. No legislation is above the constitution. Eh, we just want to remind the ANC. It has go against the NDR, the National Democratic Revolution, where it's supposed to see and to understand who are the motive forces of our people. The issue of the land is long overdue. We are not supposed to be here today. If the current government has implemented the issue of the land, or even the chapter, what we call the Freedom Charter. I would like to quote Mutoko Pekwane say, "The government that is not in charge of its economy, or even its, what we call the land, that is the failed government." The government, the current government of today, has failed our people who are in this position today because of the current government. They are going to fight us, the EFF, for this matter in parliament, on the streets, and everywhere, to demand the issue of the land across the country of South Africa. We cannot be a country whereby we are not in charge of our own economy. Thank you very much.
Eh, angabuyele kaya. Ufai tena, monbo saibabi entier. Eh, kulero, sitkubezela this row. Okay, one at the back. Let's start there at the back, one, two, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven, yes. I- imafai takaneng, eight, you are number eight. Eight, eh nine eh, that end, ten. Uza ngapambili only when I've pointed at you. Eh, fighta, this one, it must go back, and ikafi kiklaro ukuyi. Please, umde wendingamkomba ngandi yatayala, angezi. The last one, yeah. Yeah. Yes. Eh, all those that are coming in, they must sit on these rows when we are through with all these, siabuyela kubo. Can you please go back to your seat eh? Go to your seat where you are sitting, you are not sitting there, go where you are sitting.
Angtoga se cheperson. Ika malam kinkuli se, okomseza. Ki lala konala itemisile Hani Local Municipality, kinku councillor la pa eh Tembissile eh Municipality. Cheperson, angto me ngoguti, well eh eh, cheperson, ngikulile ndaweni ktuwa i Lufontaine. Namshange ibizo angekangaala, ale Sasakati bewi Lufontaine. Namshange ibizo angekangaala. Eh, cheperson, izindo zaz- zazenzega, mina nan'ku la, ngali la basalbamba shogumezo, babeto every day, gudbasuge, gule la plaz, la lava, uze baké inkangaala today. Eh, cheperson, kupshungu namshange oguti mtesokala, sinikoshe ite, but our parents were never given a chance to negotiate, or to, to eh, were never given a chance, oguti, mshame gunikoshe ite, ngali lokanjaba na. Eh, cheperson, gitimina eh eh, namngayi support eh eh i motion eh expropriation of land without compensation. Eh, che, namshange eh eh, asukoni ukfu ya, sa tata sa letwa ndaweni, enamache, ongeke wena next giyo, si letwa ngabamshop. But kupshungu namshange, namte eh, si zilas, si zokulumo oguti, si buisela ganjadi le lokanjipat, eh, tinasanga sanigero lele tuva, sa vele sa kosho, sa letwa la ndaweni, langageke wena next corner. I thank you, che.
I thank you, cheperson. I am Caesar, a councillor in the Tembissile Hani Municipality. I grew up in Lufontaine, in Kangala today. While growing up, my parents were tortured every day for the small piece of land they occupied, which is the small piece of land that we could not use due to it had so many stones that we couldn't plow, we couldn't do anything with the land. We were moved by whites to the unusable land with lots of stones. So with that said, I fully support the motion of expropriation of land without compensation. I thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much eh, che. My name is eh, Comrade Bobim Caesar, from the ANC. Che, one, I want to appreciate the effort that has been took by, by the National Department in making sure that the Portfolio Committee is visiting our people. It has been the culture in the ANC, che, that we must go time to time and consult our people when there are decisions that needs to be made. Che, there's no confusion eh, that the Portfolio Committee is here today. Also, che, I want to also remind those who are keeping saying that they did not give money to the National Parliament to come here. Unfortunately, the ANC let government got the mandate from its people the day the people voted for the ANC. Cheperson, as the ANC want to reaffirm the decision of the ANC that was taken in the fifty-four National Congress Resolution, that we will support the Appropriation Bill 2020 so, so as to redistribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievance of land and property force dispossession. We also supported the framework in the bill in line with the constitution to guide the processes and procedures for the expropriation of property, including the land by organ state, of, by organ of state. We further support in particular clause twelve, subsection C, in which allows where appropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and in the public interest for property and land in mark for socio-economic reform and redistribution. Lastly, che, we support that the expropriation authority is the state. Since this bill is about public interest and public purpose and must determine those instances where compensation may be paid, open quote, clause twelve A, and where, close quote, and where no compensation will be paid, open quote, clause twelve C, close quote. That it is a function of the government, not the court. And if anyone has a grievance, they have the right to approach the court. The court cannot be one who made the determination of compensation or no compensation. Thank you very much.
Um, thank you very much eh, cheperson of the Portfolio Committee. I send my greetings to you, che, and your collective eh members of the Portfolio Committee. And I will also extend my greetings to the leadership eh of umm, mbumalanga Legislature led by MC Spidimashilo and Comrade eh Bumishope. And also greet all the executive mayors from different municipalities within Kangala District who are present here today. Um, my name is Emmanuel Togozani Spatalala Senzanga Konama Shangu. And um, I belong to the South African community as a South African resident who is well documented and affiliated with the African National Congress as a resident of Tembissile Hani Local Municipality, ward twenty-six, right next door. Um, Honorable Chair, firstly, let me indicate that I am supporting the issue of land expropriation, especially now with the relevant powers given to the Minister of Public Works and Infrastructure to expropriate the property for public purpose and/or in the public interest. Che, I believe that having the bill signed into law, it will help our government to eradicate poverty by making land available for people to work it and for people to better their lives. However, che, while I was perusing the bill, I didn't see any involvement of the poor communities in the process of expropriating the land, and that poses a huge challenge because they cannot only be involved in the consultation when the bill is being spoken about, but when they, it's supposed to be implemented, they are not being involved. The reason I'm saying that, che, is because we cannot shy away from the fact that there are people today who own the land that was not rightfully theirs. It was taken without compensation from the rightful owners, and now those people who are not rightful owners are regarded as hold- regarded as holders of rights in that particular property, of which I believe it is unfair. Let's include a section in the bill which will give people who had land before and it was taken from them, the right to make requisition into the expropriating authority, and after investigation, such land must be expropriated without compensation. Thank you, che.
Eh, thank you very much, Honorable Chair. Greetings to your good self and honorable members. Indeed, it is not a mistake that you are here as the parliament and the government of the people. You are the government of the people by the people. So the exercise that you are doing here is not a wrongful exercise, it is the correct one. My name is Nompumele LoShope, from the African National Congress. I know that earlier on you introduced me, Honorable Chair, as the member of the provincial legislature. Eh, indeed, as the ANC, we support the Expropriation Bill 2020 so as to redistribute properly the land to, to address the centuries-old national grievances of land and proper, and property force dispos- dispossession. We support the framework in the bill in line with the constitution to guide the process and procedures for expropriation of property, including land by organs and the state. We further support in particular, che, the clause twelve C, which allows where expropriation without compensation may, may be just and equitable in terms of the constitution of the public in the interest for property and land earmarked for socio-economic reform and redistribution. Lastly, we support that the expropriation authority is the state since the bill is about public interest and public purpose and must determine those instances where compensation may be paid. And eh, clause twelve A, and where no compensation will be paid. Clause C, that this is a function of government, not the court, and if anyone has grievances, they have a right to approach the court. Courts cannot be the ones that to make a determination of compensation or no compensation. Thank you, che.
Just before you come in, um, can this row, one, two, three, join the last one? This, this, yeah. Can you join that row? I know, I'm referring to this one. This one is zoi kupa. It's because angaba kobi aba, I've not yet pointed. Can you join, yeah, the last row, please? Yeah. The, the reason I'm leaving these two is because some of them are still here in front. When they are true, I am going to ask that these two rows, they must vacate the hall. And that one, that you are in eh, that's why I'm saying they must go to that row. Can you join that room eh? Yes, the, the last row.
Eh, si zokba ba oguti, imjeje, lo uwe start, uksuka angestlini, na selepela, abanbakona, bacho ine umjeje lo ulandila guri, na besek zokba na bazokpuma, ge be bomjeje weswi, nuxugela angestlini.
Ke, kiale vo ga cheperson, kila vo ga lachunye, o neile ngione. Ki du medise wa etapele, my cheperson from the region, parlamenté, elinteng, liyamocha, elidibo maya raka muka, kiale vo ga. Eh, nali vizo, ki sofilo, hozaru Dr. J. S. Moroka, councillor, oddeti, executive member, Yahumenslik Provinciali. Ki emesi ANC. Eh, hozaru ANC, we support the bill of property and land as just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land, and that eh, expropriation of such without compensation is part of the pro- the process. For the ANC, this is about the readdressing historical injustice and dispossession of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, distribute a- assets, and promote socio-economic transformation. The ANC's program provides a way to address the land question and build productive access for our people. We are guided by the, the conference of our fifty-four National Conference Resolution. We state that the bill of land without expropriation should be among the key mechanism available to the government and give the effect of the land reform and redistribution. We submit that in line with the constitution of the republic and expropriation of the bill is the draft law of the general application that you will allow under certain circumstance, expropriation of property and land without compensation. We support the Expropriation Bill of 2020 so as to distribute property and land and address the centuries-old national grievances of the land and property force dispossession. We support as the ANC, and we thank you as the Portfolio Committee who relate ke mobatu, because the work of the parliament is to come back to the people and report and live. and loutrore community area, kiala vora. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairperson. And the parliamentary members that are here. I would like to thank you for the opportunity given to me. And my name is Sophie, an ANC member and an executive member of Ward 30. Eh, I would like to state that as the ANC, we support the Expropriation Bill. It will help in restoring the dignity of the people. And in the end, she ended up by saying that we thank you for coming back to the people because it is their responsibility of the government to give, eh, to, to come back to the people to get their views. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Program Director and also members of the Portfolio Committee. I'm Thomas Ngwenya, the Deputy Chairperson of the ANC in Ngangala Region. And therefore, we want to state categorically that the ANC is not confused. We are able to separate between the process of Section 25 of the Constitution in Parliament and this process. This process is clearly a process of expropriation bill, which as the ANC, we are fully supporting it because we want to repeal the Act Number 63 eh, of, of, of the apartheid so that then as the people, we are able to, to benefit. We are supporting this bill because it is just and equitable to do so because it has got the benefit of benefiting our people as follows. One, we must address the injustices of the past. Eighty-seven percent of land is still in the white minority hands, while thirteen percent is in the hands of our people. Secondly, we want to speed up the process of land reform in general. Thirdly, we want to, eh, to fight against particular relations of power in the society. It is through this bill when we'll be able to deal with the particular relations of power, the economic injustices and the triple challenges of poverty, unemployment and inequality, which is as a result of the apartheid past. And therefore, this bill will be able to solve this particular matter. The state in this regard must become an authority, not the courts. It is the state that must be able to make a determination as to when to pay, when eh, which, under which circumstances will expropriation of land without compensation be appropriate. In this regard, I'm referring to Section 12a and 12c of the very same eh bill, which is also going to assist us. The restoration of the dignity of the masses of our people is very critical. And this bill is going to do exactly that, Program Director. Program Director, we see this bill eh, to stimulate growth, redistribute assets and promote socio-economic transformation for our people. We want to affirm again that the Constitution and the property clause and Expropriation Bill 2020 is the law of general applications and allow, under second circumstances, the expropriation of property and land without eh compensation. And therefore, we support it as the ANC. Program Director, we want also to emphasize that government, government must do its work and make sure that the matter of land is rest with government, not the courts of South Africa. Finally, Chair, as we close, we want to affirm as the ANC that land is an asset, is a resource for socio-economic activities and the sustainable livelihoods of our people. Therefore, Chair, we are fully supporting this bill as the ANC. Thank you.
Eh, thank you, Chairperson. My name is Kenneth Mashaola, Tembesila Hani Municipality, Ward 19, San City D. Chairperson, I understand why you are here. You are here because you are a caring government. You are here because you are taking this parliament to the people. Eh, in the Freedom Charter, we are talking about the people shall govern. You are giving the people the chance to govern. So it's proper for you to be here now and again, eh, Chairperson. Yes, as the ANC, as the member of the ANC, we support, we supported this bill. We supported that the expropriating authority should be eh, given to the state because the bill is of public interest and it's eh, public, eh, it's public purpose and it must determine the instances where compensation might be paid. Eh, guided by the National Conference, the 54th National Conference and the 2019 Manifesto, eh, the land question is a very serious, serious matter. So the land reform is about redressing historical injustices and dispossession of black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock the growth and promote socio-economic transformation. Our land reform programs provide a sustainable but radical way to address the land question. The bill will assist our land reform program to build productive assets for our people, unlock agricultural productivity, secure food security and address the persistent reality of apartheid special aspiration. Eh, I'd like to thank you once again, eh, Chairperson, that you eh, said that we are not here to discuss the Section 25 that is in Parliament. We are here to review the eh, Expropriation Act 63 of 1975. I thank you.
Eh, thank you very much, Chairperson. Firstly, allow me to greet all members of Parliament and also to greet eh, different political parties that are here, traditional leaders. And also to convey my special greetings to my provincial Chairperson of the EFF, Honorable Collins Dive, and then our leaders in the province and also members of our region. My name is Mpomrokolo, the Deputy Chairperson of the EFF from Ngangala and also a PR Councilor from Emalasheni Local Municipality. Well, Chairperson, without any waste of time, we want to indicate inasmuch as we do not understand why Parliament is spending money on this process when there is a process to amend the Constitution. And then after amending the Constitution, this committee must bring a legislation informed by the Constitution. We made our submissions in two Parliament public hearings on land question. And we told members of Parliament to go and amend the Constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation into the custody of the state. We are concerned that the expropriation bill that you want us to make input on is a legislation that must tell us that what the Constitution allows for expropriation of all land without compensation. And this is how the state is going to expropriate land. And this is how the land is going to be distributed to everyone equally so. And this is how our right to use the land is going to be protected. But since you are here, Chairperson and all members of Parliament, committee members from the, the, the land committee, you must know that our position remains the same. We want all land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address colonial land dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. We did not give Parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and it should not be forsaken. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction. And we see it as a way to eject the real struggles of black people and will not solve the challenges of land. The money that is available to pay for land must be given to black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses and build businesses, and the expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. No legislation is above the Constitution. Let me repeat this one, Chair. There is no legislation that is above the Constitution. Thank you very much.
My name is Wusi, from J S Moroka, the ANC member. Eh, I'm standing here as a head person because it's so painful because the whites expect us to buy back our land from them today, whereas they never bought it from us in the first place. They came with chips to repossess what they belong, what belongs to us as black people. Why can't we then repossess back what they take forcefully from us? Thank you.
Eh, kiala vora, Chair. Kamalamu Kenneth Msiiza, kiala konalana etem, etembe si. Eh, I'm a member of the ANC in good standing. Eh, nanti say, we support the Expropriation Bill without compensation. Singu ANC sa isapota le meta sibambe sinina makusi, wasikale, kiala vora.
Thank you, eh, Chairperson. My name is Kenneth Msiiza from Tembesila Municipat... Oh, I reside here in Tembesila Municipality and I'm an ANC member. Eh, I would like to say that as the ANC, we support eh, this bill eh, together with eh, our traditional authority. I thank you.
Eh, si zonika makusi now eh, sesezaguni, but we would like to give them the chance to speak eh, eh, ningesa, eh, those that are going to speak.
Kiala Togoza, Mpati ndabo.
Eh, Kenneth, Akolisa. Eh, we giving you five minutes?
Sini keli msozomta, ndabesi. Kiala Togoza, Mpati ndabo. O cha mepamwenu, mlane kosi olifantwa koma Masangu, o nguchepe senwe kontralesa kum Ngangala Region. Gitana ukti mthomela ekteni, gi acknowledge eh, ubkona bete likeshini e kontralesa ekona xlangana nati. Obaba uru ni matlala oye National Youth Wing Code Nata e kontralesa. Obaba ucha ni masombuka o yungu Secretary e kontralesa kum Pumalanga Province Youth Wing. Eh, umama umandleni ma great o ngutrezjara ye Women's Wing Ngangala. Ganyeh no ma ukwesi skosana oye Deputy Secretary ye Women's Wing Ngangala Region. Na loloke itima eskamba nalo le kontralesa ekona xlangana nati. Gitana uktatani lituba ko oktoma ngiti. Njen'ukus si noktwaye egan, lo ukti ubkusi abuka me nywa ngendla e fanelewo ukti bso baklo xlangano. Ngwenya ma zetu zombili sichekele naso watolakala ukti azgakre, azgakrei ama invitation o baklo xlangano, loko kiaskatas. Then, astomela ekteni. Unyago pellego, gubene lhele, lakona kukanjelwa umpakati woke. Uzo uzu ya imi swa yompakati ukti, batini ngos Section 25. Ama inputs wetu namcha, namasamishin swetu swenzile ene adliye, njen'ukus. Si ile sa uwenzama presentations adliye, njen'ukus. Nanjen'kanje, sisa jamela hapo njen'ukus. Njen'eklangano jamela makusi, sisa jamela hapo ukti, nasi ipil ile ti wepamwetu, ukti sizo ikala. Marewi ikale nweedu. Indo eve kate ucha nyue peswa o kulu kulu i amendment eh, Section 25. Namxanjie, guba yini. Uthathwe eh, direction anye. Yoku tukulethwe ipil. Esokzamu ngmaneja. Lendo esngavmela ninayo. Yuktathwa kum xlabanga pantu, ukti ba nepesenwe. Ngoba uka amendawe Section 25. Ngiko ekfanele kulete. Ukti yoke miyeye mtejuane fanele ukti lande. Fanele uchutu itjamegunja. Loku kiaskatas. Ukti, uwezwe ipil. Gandi ekfanele uchenthwe eh, Section 25. Negeta uchenthwa, ndenbese uza emiye mtejuana ama regulations asok efekta eh, Section 25. Isamishini eh, tupambini. Ibeso balanga lenkela eti, umxaba ngewabano besewa Afrika. Ngewe community ye sewa Afrika. Nena ma custodian walomxaba makusi. Ubkusi go 1912. Batumela, abosopolo tik, ukti abakanbe bayo uunuwa. Banuele ukti umxaba ubiele kbanigas. Dona namxanjie, basenga kabuwye makusi in, bazoscheela ukti lomxaba ubielanjanu ubielani nikbanigas. Manje standa uji uktisi, lete uwele Lisa. Kubosopolo tik, machango ti woke xlangano zoke. Ukti bangalenzi iputa. Bapa sise imiteto. Ezo ukti ngelinye ilanga ibarare ibemi kondo ekale ngakiibo. Ne banga seko e mbuswe. Banga ipasi si imiteto e political. Ezo ukti ngelinye ilanga ibemi kondo ekale ngakiibo. Ne banga seko e mbuswe. Ne bangaseko e mbuswe. Yege njenge kontralesa. Inahayo ke. Sialleta ukuti. Amasap missions swetu njeng obasa owenza. Gufanele ukutya kala kalisi swe a komude itwe. Ekpasiswe niwayo yoke imite. Amakosi angatritwa ceremonial. Angatritwa ceremonial. Nese ipasiswa yoke lemiteto. Wenzi we ikini so ukuti. Lamasap missions are considered. Nanga consideroago njenge kontralesa. Ipossession ye tu itliye. Njeng obasi constitutional democracy. Enesaya mugelangesa nlesimshope. Indaba yonakala ukodessa la bebe kates ngakacha melegi kona guhle. Geskatwenzo ama compromises. Gukuninyso anindaba Sunset Clause. Guukthatwa indaba yonguiselo we. National question ye land owi question number one. Kubanigas e kubabantu we seula Africa. Besa baitati bayenza ngale nklela. Yama imperialist namsha namakolonialist. Loko ya skatas. Yege njenge kontralesa. Okunye no kunye. Okzokpasiswa njeng omteeto. Guunga fe ivari gufake ngapagati amakosi. Loko si zo ku challenge angasozoke nklela. Sisvense se woke imikudu ye koto. Ukfinyelela ku national eh gu koto eh constitutional. Ukpigisa. Sa pigisa ananispluma. Mariispluma sia sibenza namsha njee. Wenziwa ama regulation okshonywa ama traditional council. Amatraditional council awa existi kungjina njenga namsha njee. Loko ya skatas njenga makosi. Shanga no kakongolose. Shanga no ye E F F. Itaniskati sisa mvumela ye parlamenti. Nitale pasi nitate imkundo. Esiride nankundo. Esokbenefitalo umpagat. Njeng obasa ntumadje nga makosi. Ninga zolingelinye ilanga. Gia Togoza kulele kulesosbanka.
Sia bonga.
Thank you, Cheperson. And greetings to you and your team. Undabesita. Uh Undabesita introduced the team under kodessa, under kontralesa. And all the people that accompanied him to this meeting. He clearly states that as royal, as the royal house, they are very worried that royalty or the royal house was not properly invited. They have, they have checked out and confirmed that both kings of Amandebele nation were not invited to be here. And Undabesita continues to say, last year there was a program about public hearings where communities were visited. And their views were sought about Section twenty-five of the amendment of Section twenty-five of the constitutions. The amendments and the, the, the present, the submissions were made very clear by royalty. And the status, the status quo on the side of the royalty remains about expropriation without compensation. Royalty does not expect that one day the passing of these laws will take another direction. Royalty feels that this bill that has been proposed now. It is being proposed to manage the, the expropriation. Uh the expropriation of, sorry, it is, it is, it is introduced to manage Section twenty-five. Then Section twenty-five would be sort of diluted. It will no longer be the guiding law. He makes an example about the negotiations at Cordessa. Where the issue of land was actually item number one. But a lot of compromises were made under the so-called Sunset Clause. Where the issue of land was now shifted backwards. The Royal House is very worried about this, Cheperson. He also warns government that government should not pass laws that when they are no longer in power, the laws will only point at them. It is a warning from the royal family. And the laws should not just be passed politically. Kontralesa says, all the submissions that were made and forwarded to parliament about Section twenty-five should be considered when the final product of the amendment is arrived at. He also requests the ruling party, the A N C, the E F F to also work hard to make, to make sure that justice is done on this matter of land. He then concludes by saying, if any law will be passed on the issue of land and amakosi are excluded. Then they will be forced to seek legal advice and follow all legal channels available to them to fight the issue of land. Thank you, Undabesit.
Gitana oktoza. Mpati we shelo. Ikamalame umulepani roonya gamatlala. The National Youth Coordinator. Ye kontralesa. Ngilochise ubkosi. Ubkona boke ubkosi bakamachaki ni nyama yenwe. Ni tischaba askanzu zamaboro. Eh ngilochise mlanekosi xoshimashilo. Tovela. Eh. Unyama yenwe. We bete gespogwin. But. Gesobeja two, I mean three points. Sischaba isinzima. Kune, kune kulu eva niselsabelele masele se kubumbi. Sidi tina isizu esimnyama. Sikalela izwileitu. Ela tatwa gabamshope nomakama bo. Malibu ye izwileitu. Sialfu. By so saying, Cheperson. I also want to, to say the manner in which you invited the traditional leadership. It is uncalled for. Because we are not just Baragaspe, Arba Homana. We are not just people. We are leading the society. Eh. Number one. As the kontralesa, we, we are supporting the view to expropriate the land without compensation. As the current laws of restitution and restri- restription. And proactive land acquisition strategy. Because all the processes have failed to restore the dispossessed land to the people. Land was dispossessed from the communities under traditional leadership. And no other structure, I repeat. No other structure or a person must receive land that they will never be dispossessed of. The issue of CPAs. As the, as the recipients of parcels of land. It is not only illegal, Cheperson. But it is dividing our communities where traditional leadership are leading. Traditional authorities must take ownership of the restored land. In conclusion, Cheperson. We are saying as kontralesa, do not touch communal land. We are saying as kontralesa. Go and appropriate the land that is in the hands of the white people. Thank you very much.
Mister Matlala here greeted all royalty. And he says that Undabesita who spoke earlier was spot on. He then quoted a song which says, we black people. We are mourning or crying for our land that was taken by white people or boas. Bring our land back, we want it back. Thank you.
Sia bonga. Kumakosi akuti. We would like to explain how the invitation was done. It was done through the National House of Traditional Leadership in all the provinces. We humbly apologize as the portfolio committee that it didn't reach our traditional councils. Sia Akolisa, makosi akuti. We would like to acknowledge one of our colleagues who has joined us. Eh sina ye eh National Assembly. Eh Honorable Dumsane Mtenjan. Thank you for joining us. Eh the provincial cheperson of E F F, Ufaita Colin Sedibe. Thank you. We now going to allow the executive mayor eh and the M E C eh to be the first in this group. Eh you can join it there. Then eh point here. Is going to be number three, yes. Yeah. Then number four. Number five, the red, yeah. Number five. Number six. You also going to speak in that. Number seven. Okay. Okay, we need two more years. Yeah, end. Ah no, this is the last turn. Okay. In the second, yeah. Thank you very much, Honorable Cheperson. Let me take this opportunity and greet your good self and the members of the committee. Greet eh the M E C for Human Settlement, Bab Machilo. Just apologies eh. Executive Mayor. Okay. Uh. Abantu ma bayo kufikale itu. Ufaita bafunutet. Will, will allow eh Ufaita. The Cheperson to speak after Ubaaba. Ufaita Sedibe. Okay, thank you very much. I also want to greet my, my colleagues, the executive mayors and all the people who are here present. My name is eh Dr. Nomzam Swenimachangu. I'm representing the African National Congress. Eh the A N C supports appropriation of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land. And that appropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. Honorable Cheperson. As the A N C, we further continue to say that eh. Eh this is a, is very much important to us because it's about the addressing of the historical injustices and disposition of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unblock growth, redistribute assets and promote socio-economic eh information, transformation. The A N C further says, Cheperson, that eh our program is African National Congress provides a way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people. We are saying that this law is very important to us as African National Congress because it's going to bring back the dignity of our people and it's going to assist us as government to ensure that we bring back, like I've said, istunzi. Sabantu beke tunya Togoza. We support the bill.
Uh thank you, Chair. Our greetings to honorable members. Received our warmest greetings and welcome from Nkangala in Mpomala. Well, on behalf of the A N C. We support eh this process of consulting the people. Our people don't need stand. Stand is just three hundred meters. Our people needs land. It is great that you chose this month of April. The same month that sixteen fifty-two on the sixth of April. John Van Ribek landed in this country. So that's a correct date time for you to consult. The A N C has said before, we support the expropriation of land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land. And that expropriation of such without compensation is part of our process. Section twenty-five of the constitution. We have long supported it and wanted it to be amended as such. This process of the bill, which indeed is a bill of twenty twenty and that of Public Works is one of the sub-processes to access democracy to our people. Hence, we participate in support of this bill as the A N C. We support that the expropriating authority is the state. Since this bill is about public interest and public purpose. And must determine those instances where compensation may be paid as clause twelve A. And where no compensation will be paid as clause twelve C. That is the function of the government, not the courts. And if anyone has an grievance, they have the right to approach the court as democracy so dictates. We fully agree with our makosi as they presented here by Undabesita olifantwa ndabo. That as the A N C and the progressive parties in parliament. We shall make sure that we get this land now without delay. We don't know what is the future have for us. We know what is the present have for us. And thus the power contains in our hand. For that reason, the A N C in this region support the expropriation of our land without compensation. Yabulela mpatu klan.
Thank you very much, Cheperson. And greetings to all the members of the portfolio committee. And eh. Everybody present here, including the regional Jefferson of the A N C here in Nkangala. The mayor. And all that are here that I have not seen. My colleagues in the E F F. Well eh. I'm not late, I was here but outside with the ground forces. Because I thought they will be the one who's going to speak. Since I spoke in. Because I thought they will be the one who's going to speak since I spoke in Ushpakrich. Now, ang bulisene mkos, ndabesi t'obkona la. Miswile inputeni begile, gutikmele sense in the parliament, especially the EFF and the A N C. Now, we all know that we are in this process because of a motion that was moved by the EFF to expropriate the land without compensation and was supported by the A N C through its majority in parliament. We had these eh hearings before, I think two of them in the province. And eh, we raised the very same thing, that the land must be expropriated without compensation. So I know today, maybe to clarify and just give a free political lecture to also our colleagues from the A N C, is that today, the committee is here solely for the eh, expropriation bill. So you either object or agree to the expropriation bill. So as the EFF, we object to the expropriation bill on the basis that there's a confusion. One, there's a process in parliament that is ongoing in terms of the expropriation of the land without compensation. And no legislation is above the constitution. So that process must be finalized first and then can bring a legislation that is informed by the constitution. So that's the confusion that you must understand. So the relevancy of this committee today and the past days that they have been here is the one that we must challenge because we all agree.
Ypewelilikla shanakostan, thank you.
Eh, ngapandli kumochisakati, ngilochisa u Chairperson we committee. Eh, nabavoki abakanbele abakona namchlanjeslana. Ika malame ngingu Masocha wakanduli. U branch secretary we A N C la enkona apinde abingu watcancela wakona la ekwaxasi. Eh, Chairperson, well eh, ngapandli kokchigasigage. Yomele sivege itla akte eh, lebechta lenena yonamchlanjes. Yoguti eh, sitlaka anje. Gukena labanrabafi ange trometaris, abanrabafi angu 1652 la Africa. So then eh, ang fulukmochisakati, ngizobamfichani, ngisapota e bill. Yogutikvuswe umhlaba wetu abandubalaika ya. Ngapandli kokunepeziliswa, ngapandli kokma discussion auvue umhlaba wabanrabanzima, yatogos.
My name is Masocha Ntuli, who's a branch secretary of A N C. Without much ado, I just want to put it clear that we are in this situation because of the sheep trometaris and the people who came in it in 1652. We support the expropriation of land without compensation, thank you.
Eh, lochani, o kulumayo ngu bongane, wakadlameni, ilunga alaka A N C. Well, one, nginesfisosukwakliye oguti sa isapota expression, expropriation bill. Ngali zizi zati. Eh, izoshelepa ogutisiwazi, oktata impasha no umhlaba, ngapandli recompensation. Ogu apply recompensation lakmeli apply okun. Lu ku kuzo slakelela ogutiskwaz, ogutisi cheinchele simu. Esasyo sabanrabanzima abapekanenaso, abatachelu umhlaba, abatachelu impasha. Ngoba zinengezinde sasluza ago, axing umhlaba kpele, koto ne impasha ngaparat. So ku balalegi le ogutiskwaz, ogutisigwenzeno ogu, ngendela esemte twen. That is why I support a lelelele bill. Ogunye, enkonvenye 254, see A N C savumelan, mza okotange from guy. The expropriation of land without compensation should be amongst the key mechanisms available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution. Iloke savumelan anangak enkonvenye. So lu ku kuzo kwasu, ogutikuslekelele eh, Chairperson, sigwazu lungisa. Bo onke o, o, o ngazange, we, weenzige kache, ebandu inbeet. Sigwazu kilegelela banbeet, bakonuktolizindu, zabu espilo ngakbona, ezatatuangu ngasimte eto, neskatso bandululu, nyabonga Chairperson.
My name is Bonganil Mini. We clearly, as the A N C, we clearly support the, the bill, the expropriation bill. And this will help us to take land without compensation. We will also be able to change the people's life. It was not only land, but in even other property of people, black people that was taken. We must do this legally. He even quoted at laws from the 54th Conference of the A N C. So as the A N C and as government, we must correct the lives, we must correct the situation for the lives of people to get their property and land back, thank you.
Eh, thanks very much. Let me take this opportunity to firstly introduce myself before the portfolio committee and the members in this house. Hmm, my name am Tembalakima Donzela. I'm residing in Dr. J S Moroka Municipality and also the councillor in Dr. J S Moroka Municipality and the chairperson of the branch in ward 18. And my greetings to the portfolio committee, the executive mayor of Tembizileha Municipality, and my chairperson at the level of the region comrades P D, Kadiishi Machilo, and the comrades in large, thank you very much. Eh, ang lochisen okosokona obcha nyolengapagat. Well, I'm not going to be long because I can see that eh, we are making lot of tortologies here. Eh, but eh, I must confirm before the portfolio committee that eh, as the African National Congress, no, we are not confused. We are here to reaffirm our 54th National Conference Resolution on the issue of the expropriation of land without compensation. We are reaffirming that and this program is the program that we are going to support. And I must also thank the efforts that has been made by our government at the level of national by giving this portfolio, this portfolio committee the, 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 the opportunity to have these consultative meetings because it shows that the government cares about us. I so wish that each and every bill which is going before the parliament, the consultative process must be there. The consultation, it give us the dignity as the people of South Africa that we have voted the government of people by the people for the people. The government that will take care of us, we must be consulted. And that give us an opportunity to interact with our government. So the bill that it has been brought before us, it is fully supported by us as A N C and our communities because our problem did not start yet yesterday. Our problem started in 1652 on the arrival of John Van Ribek, Simon van der Stijl and other groups in South Africa. They stole the land. This is our land, the land it belongs to us, in particular, the Black people. So we are going to take this land back without any compensation. I thank you, amatra.
Eh, lochanonke, itama ngo glochisukosi eh. Ngilochise leadership of the EFF, now okama lunga we committee akona lapopambi. Then ngilochisa nompagat uoke. Now eh, mina etama namngustif, wa masangu, xala akona la Tembizide. Eh, tefontensee tuwa 12. Eh, Chairperson, as the EFF, we do not understand why parliament is spending money on this process when there is a process to amend the constitution and eh, and then after amending the constitution, this committee must bring a legislation informed by the constitution. We made our submission in two parliaments, public hearings on the land question. And we told members of the parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation into the custody of the state. We are concerned that the expropriation bill that, that you want us to take, that you want us to make input on is legislation that must tell us. Now that the constitution allows for expropriation of all land without compensation, this is how the state is going to expropriate land. This is eh, this is how the land is going to be distributed to all, to, to all everyone equally. And this is how our right to use the land is going to be protected. But since eh, since you are here, you must know that our position remains the same. We want all land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address colonial land dispossession and legacy of apartheid. We did not give parliament mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not commodity and, and it should not be forsaken. The expropriation bill is unnecessary, is an unnecessary destruction. And, and we see it is, it as a way to, to hijack the real struggles of black people will, and will not solve the challenges of land. The money that is available to pay for land must be given to black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm. To build houses and business and expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. No legislation is above the constitution. This is Africa, this is my home, I thank you.
Eh, kichupela olébora Chairperson, le parlamenté, le maroshi, alimoo. Nakina Isaac Mapeka, Uw wat seven, Dr. J S Moroka, ki Chairperson ya APC, branch. Eh, mo eh, expropriation bill ya, li fasiguri, liwaleva tumba wanzu, riemaliona. Li mchatoa APC riemaliona. Mahoa ile atlamoka 1952, ajela ba twa wanzu li fasig. Kanjega ho, korvalipadel. Viyalo li fasigere niyaka horliwale korina, pimbalona ba twa wanzu. Ta ba ya musho yaring land without compensation riemaliona. Ba tumo li fa, mo, ba twa wanzu mo li fasig la Africa basokol. Kage mahoa ba abajetina gaya boona. Ba twa wanzu ga bana gaye ba dule angona, ba ba tlacha tlacha momikuku. Ri nyaka horba twa wanzu ba buye, ba tle mo li fasig la boona, ba ba fediti, ba honoholima. Ba honoho chwecha, ti kwebo jedi mpiili. Seo ki kichupela, seo ki snyakan, kichupela ru musho, u di rekapi la orri li fasig la riinaliwaleho, riinaba twa wanzu, kanjega osnyaswaga. I say thank you.
Eh, I would like to eh, thank eh, the Chairperson and the parliament as well as the traditional authorities eh, for this opportunity that has been given. Eh, my name is Isaac Mapeka from eh, J S Moroka, Wat seven, and I'm an APC member. Now eh, I want to say that we support eh, the expropriation bill. Now eh, white people came here in the nineteen something years and they took our land without paying for it. Now eh, we are saying that they should bring back our land and that should be done without any compensation. Black people are suffering and they are staying in she, in checks. So we are saying that eh, they should be empowered. Now the government must eh, hurry up in that process and give eh, the black people their land. I thank you.
Thank you. Greetings to everyone. I'd like to also send my greetings to eh, our leaders who are, who are presenting us in the parliament. I'd also like to send my greetings to our provincial chairperson, which is Commissar Colin Sedibe. Eh, my name is Maggie Mthanga. I'm residing here in Tembizile in Watuan Muloto. Eh, and also the deputy regional, Ngangala Regional Secretary and also a councillor in the Ngangala District Municipality. Eh, Chairperson, we do not understand why the parliament is spending so much money in the, in the process, where there is a process to amend the constitution and thereafter amending the constitution. This committee must bring a legislation informed by the constitution. And believe you me, we are not, we are, we are not confused when we say, we remember when we made our submissions in two parliament public hearings on the land question. And we told members of parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow the expropriation eh, of all land without compensation into the custody of the state. But since you are here, you must know that our position remains the same. We want all the land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address colonial and dispossession and the, and the legacy of apartheid. We did not, we did not give parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for the land that was stolen. Our land is not a community, a community and should not be forsaken. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary destruction and we see it as a way to hijack the real struggles of black people and will not solve the challenges of the land. The money that is available to pay for the land must be given to the black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses and build businesses. And the expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. No legislation is above the constitution. So please eh, 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 help us. That is why we will end up having the situation where white people are killing our black peoples in the farms there. Can you please fast track the, the, the process? So that this, this thing must come to end of eh, eh, black people being killed in the farms. As black people, I think we've suffered enough, thank you.
Eh, Chairperson, thank you very much for the opportunity and all protocol observed. Chairperson, unlike those who are coming here and saying that. My name is Mzwandiles Kosana. Eh, I'm from Wat 19, branch Chairperson and deployed by the A N C at Tembizileha Municipality. Chairperson, unlike those who are saying they are confused and they are, don't understand why we are conducting this process. Some of us, we understand it correctly. This is public participation and we appreciate you for that. Chairperson from the African National Congress, we support the expropriation of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing the access to property and land and that expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. This process according to the A N C is about redressing or addressing the historical injustice and disposition of. and dispossession of the black majority. And Chairperson, we are comfortable that this legislation will empower the local, provincial and national authorities to expropriate land in the public interest in order to promote inclusivity and access to natural resources. Chairperson, as the ANC, we support the Expropriation Bill 2020 so as to redistribute properly property and land to address the centuries-old national grievance of land and property forced dispossession. I thank you.
Chairperson, greetings to all our leaders and the team of, of parliamentary team. And also greeting to my Chairperson of Ngangala District, Honorable Spiri Masilo and my honorable mayor, honorable Sini, Baguetu, Ngutini Samson Skosana. Ngutini Samson Skosana, Ngichlalala Ikwa Kafundenei, Ewat Twenty Seven. Ngogutabuga, Kisa Kegengisbeke Ngani, Ngishukuti Ngapali Kusukutha Iskatisa Isapota Le Pile, Yeah, Land Expropriation. Kudala Silogo Siilua Lenki Ngah, Yeah, Pile, Ugutse Ipumeliliswe, Ngoba, Sa Suga Emaplasi, Jenga Sepel Fase Te Seker Boskop, La Nganga Lapo Ekati Nganga Gaza Loakona, Ubaba Akosha Kapshungu Leondaho, Epel Fase Te Seker Boskop. Uguyaguetu Eprongoro Langaza Lilakona, Sa Figay Eprongoro, Eposman Skral, Lamina Ngaza Lilakona, Ngonyakaga nineteen sixty, Nakona Sa Akosha Sa Akosha Kapshungu Kona, Sa Xianimfuyo, Ya Sekaya La. Ngizau Fagazela Le, Iparagraf, Ne Paragraf Le Iokina, Engi Thanda Uti, Engi Fagazele, Iti we support that the expropriation authority is the state since the bill is about public interest and public purpose and must determine those instances where compensation may be paid. Close twelve, and where no compensation will be paid, close twelve C, that is in a function of the government and not to court. And if anyone has a grievance, they have right to approach the courts. Courts cannot be the ones to make determination of compensation or no compensation. I thank you.
The first person who had raised her hand, Ibinguma. Yeah.
Thank you, Chairperson. My name is Samson Skosana, Wat Thirty Seven, Dwefondane. We support this bill and we've been crying all along for the bill to be passed. For an example, my father was was in Belfast some years ago and he was forced to live there. And we went to Seker Bos and also we were forced to leave that place. That is where I was born, in Posmanskral in nineteen sixty. We were forced to leave behind even our flock. So we support this bill fully. He then read a paragraph which contains close twelve C, where it talks about compensation but also about redress to those who are not satisfied. Thank you.
After this row, we start in there.
Mthogo, Chairperson, Ikamalamin Buile Wagamachangu, I hereby support the expropriation of the property and land. I thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair of the Portfolio Committee and all members. Let me greet the embassy for human settlement as well as the Chairperson of Ngangala Region in the ANC. We appreciate all executive mayors. Uguholiwe Tu Endabugo, Sitiwaye Te Endabezita.
Just for a few minutes. Uh, I understand that the majority came in afterward presented the ground rules. When there is a speaker on the floor, no one speaks, no one moves around because that's what we're going to do even when we are speaking. So we appeal to those that are sitting down. If your phone rings, you go out to answer it. We don't want you answering the phone here so that we can hear the speaker. Please, we must note those ground rules. Thank you.
Sitogose, Mthineshalo, representing the ANC Women's League, we come and support the bill as presented as well as its processes. It is our submission, Chair, as the ANC Women's League, that an amended version of the bill in line with our written submission will empower the government to expropriate land of the beneficiaries of the obnoxious rules of apartheid for the benefit and the empowerment of the poor and the most vulnerable members of the community after following due processes and for either compensation or without compensation depending on the history of the land. As the ANC Women's League, we endorse the powers of the minister and proposes that the bill outline the powers of the ministers of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Human Settlement as secondary stakeholders. In terms of Section Five One B, talking to registered and unregistered members, as the ANC Women's League, we propose the publication of the outcome of the investigations for transparency and to enable us to support women and make them aware and for them to claim their rights as either registered or unregistered owners. We acknowledge that women are not empowered to participate in the issues affecting them. A lack of transparency in this regard can overlook the existence of registered and unregistered rights of owners by women. We also look at sustainability in Section Five One A and we're saying as the ANC Women's League, we endorse the proposal and acknowledges the importance to conduct thorough evaluation and investigation and propose the adoption of an efficient coordinated system that will ensure that the suitable land is expropriated. A lack of such a system in the past resulted in government purchasing unsuitable land which is currently contributing to the land demand pressure. The need for land in South Africa is complex and both the immediate and need for land for residential purposes and agricultural farming should be accounted for. In terms of the notice for expropriation, we're saying the minister's regulations may provide a clear time period for expropriation of land and property cases to be dealt with or the minister may empower the land.
Thank you, ma'am.
Eh, Sanbonani Noke Ngapakati Onueni, Ondochisago Ngubaba Ula Ngamamos Machangu, Enoko Nami Engsimiga Nuksegela, Lombono Ofelago Uguti Inaha Itatu Ngapali Kusenge Pezelo, Engfuna Ugugucho Ngifunugucho Uguti Bandube Ketu, Eh, Ngitima Yete Gwanyama, Ngiti Lohcha Parlamente, Ngiti Lohchani Ba Fortuna Bota Twetu. Eh, Ogumtsweni Agogunye, Loku Esikasapota Go SiaKasapota, Ne Di Sengenzelela, Goguti Mchambe SiaVota Unyaga Lu Sengagenzelela Loko. Eh, Senzele Goguti Inaha Ipumelele, Ngen Gobana Ugukuluunya. Ngigukuluunyeswa Ili Loku Na, Ngigukuluunyeswa Iksu Eppshungu, Ngakle Man Go Ninety Eighty. Nanamchange Ikremu Iapumelala Ngotwendi Fourteen. Yatibona Ipumelele Ikremu Ngotwendi Fourteen. Iangena Abanya Abantu Esangutinelinye, Esangutinelinye Waban Kiyo Itimu Yetuleyo. Fedele Wa Shanga Shanga Na Abafunu Kyoghenova Inaha Kabani Gazi. Enesachengi Swa Ipepa, Badi Ipepa Budgeti Umbusa Stengelenka Inaha, Litififteen Million One Hundred and Fourteen Thousand Five Hundred and Ten. Mara Swela Ngotwendi Fourteen Totnammchanda Skafiiki, Enaheni Tina. Besbawa Uguti Ikapnek Inoma Mchambe, Aba Abangongoche Abapatelene Neze Inaha. Basise Soke Enahen Ngenalei Community, Eva Inige La Inaha. Gusavonurfante Nekhala Last Ride. Inamba Ra Ifortutri JS, Ne Three Nine Zero JS, Ne Four Two Three JS. Sikulele La Apo, Wasali Imkomo Za Boba Mkulu La Apo, Nazaboba Abasakichwa, Sikotwa, Nanamchange Sisekuwala, Silashegeluasi Imkomu Imkomu Solonga Figala, Ngetale Tani Imkomu Solonga Figala Ikwa. Magyasiswa Utsungukulu Baguetu Nasukuluma, Ngenro Innyaga, Ngapezulu Gama Chumama Bilu Innyaga, Silogo Siti Iapuma Yesa Yesa Ingafeli. Magyangfunugucho Ngitimina, Singenzelela Oguti Mchambe Konala, Esfunugi Akonano Ma Esfunugu Kzusa. Abanulaba Ababulala Nagan Gage Maplasele Neze Nralege, Ne Tuukoma Banrababa Ketaana. Abanrabai Yindaba Iguti Umteto, Gucho Ungas Tatelle Sanjein. Mara Utote Achugumeza Tatelinrosako Bambope Bamlishe, Bangesogutelugutu Bamlishe Ngazatu Zipini. Magyalo Gogutsungukulu Smawugudeskalepane, Uguti Ke.
Greetings to everybody. I am Mr. Amos Machangu. I support the expropriation bill without compensation. But I also address my people and say, I'm worried because we could be doing this just for votes. We rather should be engaging in this process for the success of our people. We made a claim nineteen ninety-eight and it was only approved in twenty fourteen. But some other people then occupied the property. In spite of the fact that we were given a paper budget of fifteen million plus renz, we haven't received anything since then. We therefore ask cabinet ministers who deal with land reform and development to look into the matter of these reports, four two three, three nine zero, four two three JS. And these are places where our forefathers used to stay. And it is painful that over twenty years of waiting, nothing has come to pass. Please, government, don't do it for personal gain. We are always told not to take law into our own hands. But we have allowed people to rob us and take things from us and we remain destitute. Thank you.
As the APC, we support expropriation of land without compensation to restore the dignity of our people. This is about the redressing historical injustice and dispossession dispossession of the African majority. It is an opportunity to unlock growth and social economic transformation. The APC have a program to address the land question. As APC, as APC, we can buy a land that was not sold. Biyalaka Rele, Rele Morre, APC. Rechalete Iloongona. Haye Goba Boraidukhebo Potana. Korba Khonugu, Kupidisha, Lu Gu dipidisha, Lu Uthola Mishu. Mago Banina Gayare Na, Yan Dweensu, Iasokola. Gobani Lifasi Lichere Mazogonabona, Kibatwaba BanDweeshu. Kage Gurialo, Rele APC Ri Ri, Bring Back Our Land. Rohonogo Rele Banabandweensu, Rohonogo Pila, Lu Gu Dipidisha. Ri Ri, Rele APC Ri Melan Ri 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 Ri, Resapota Bill Iloongona Ri Alebore.
I thank you for the opportunity. And my name is Lebora Mama Wulo from Wat Twelve, JS Moroka. Uh, we say that the money that is to be used for compensating, those who are selling the land should be given to small-scale black farmers so that they can sustain themselves since they are suffering. Now, ourselves as the APC, we support the bill. I thank you.
Eh, Kilewoha, Kufiwaswaka Se, Moharehankwe, Kidumerisabavo, Utle Batwari Bama Rapo. Eh, Kilen Nashitonga Victama Shava, Kitzwa Kilemooloto, Ki Walilukula ANC. The past history of colonization and apartheid unjust laws has done a huge damage against African people. Their land was taken without any compensation. An imposing Native Land Act of nineteen thirteen, that was oppressive to deprive African people to own land and not to move as they wish and were removed without their will. It is where African people have lost their dignity and identity of their birthplace, South Africa, as part of Africa. Even today, rural people don't have grazing land or camps to improve their livestock, don't have title deeds to own land because of the legacy of apartheid and try to farm homeland to create poverty because of no investment in those areas at all. I fully support expropriation bill without compensation, hoping that the land will go back to rightful owners to utilize. to utilize and participate in the economy of their country as part of transformation and regain identity and dignity as fast as possible. I thank you.
Well, in the beginning of his speech, he started by saying, "Thank you Chairperson for the opportunity. My name is Victor Mashaba. I'm an ANC member and I'm from Maribor." Hello? Oh, yes. Thank you very much. Greetings Chairperson and your collective in the house. Well, Chair, we supported the bill. A bill is a proposed legislation that will later be enacted into a legislation. So there's no confusion and we support the process. Chair, the nineteen thirteen Land Act and the nineteen twenty-five Land Administration Act was a deliberate, well-engineered institutionalized process to dispossess our people, in particular the African majority of their land. So, in order to reverse that, you need to embark on a well-thought-conscious deliberate process institutional in order to allocate and redistribute the land back to its rightful owners. It's only logical, Chairperson. In particular, section twelve C of the constitution which allows for land expropriation without compensation. In the process, Chair, we also call that when that happens, we must safeguard food security and also ensure that participation in the land is for all in order to allow an inclusive economy. Chair, where we are in Tembissile, an area of about two hundred and fifty thousand people, is a dry land with no catchment area, with no dams, suffering of a crisis of water. And people are placed here by design, by the apartheid regime. It is a challenge that we are sitting with it for over five years, declared disaster by the district. And the national government is aware of this problem. And our people are continue to suffer from lack of water. There can be no farming here because the place is dry, it's arid, it's not farable. Therefore, we want land, compensation, I mean, expropriation of land without compensation so that the dignity and integrity, the identity of our people can be restored. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, greetings Chair of the portfolio and all protocol observed. My name, when I was born, I was told that I was Glaki Kolani Mtweni, representing the ANC, known as BOBO. The original Chair of the ANC, Udlik in Gangala Region here. I reside in ward nineteen in Tembissile, the Hani Local Municipality, as the Deputy Secretary of the Branch of the ANC. ILX Mtweni, representing the ANC, state that the ANC supports expropriation of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land and other expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. You will also bear in mind, Chair of the session, that we are here in terms of the state we categorize in terms of how the land is owned. Seventy-two percent, if I'm correct, is owned by whites. You will also find that five percent is owned by coloreds. You will also find that we as black people that are owning this particular land are owning four percent. So therefore, we do support. For the ANC, this is about readdressing historical injustice and dispossession of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth and distribute asset and promote social economic transformation. And the ANC program provides a way to address the land question and to build a productive asset for our people. We are guided by our fifty-fourth National Conference Resolution, which states that, open quote, "Expropriation of land without compensation should be amongst the key mechanism available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution clause code." We submit that in line with the Constitution of the Republic of South Africa and the property laws, the expropriation bill is the draft law of general application that will allow under certain circumstances expropriation of property and land without compensation. We support the expropriation bill twenty twenty so as to distribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievance of land and property force disposition. We support the framework in the bill and in line with the Constitution to guide the process and procedures for expropriation of property, including land by organ of state. We support in particular clause twelve C, which allows where expropriation without compensation may be just and equitable in terms of the Constitution and in the public interest for property and land marked for a social economic reform and distribution. As I close, we support that the expropriating authority is the state since this bill is about public interest and public purpose and must determine those instances where compensation may be paid, clause twelve A.
Your time is up, Stalo.
Greetings to all and I also greet members of parliament. I am Danimas Tango, EFF Chair, Ward one Belfast. I support fully the expropriation of land without compensation. But I would like you to include the fact that mines must also be put under government. Farm dwellers in the areas where mines are now being ill-treated by those mines, they lack water, there's a lot of dust and their houses crack. They live in a dangerous, now dangerous houses. Their lives are threatened. The mines remove them from places where they could sustain themselves and take these people to places where they would find it difficult to live. So I request that you really look into this. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairperson. My name, I'm Sipon Tlayani, the Chairperson of the African National Congress and Drumadi Branch, Marapiyan. I'm also the Chief Whip, Dr. J S Moroka Municipality. I support the expropriation of the bill. And also, we want to say as the ANC, we support the provision of the property and land and just equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to the property and land and that expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. For the ANC, this is about that readdressing historic justice and the position of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, distribute assets and promote social economy and the transformation. The ANC as program provides a way to address the land questions and build productive asset of our people. We also support the expropriation of the land without compensation should among the key mechanism available to government to give effect to the land reform and distribution. We submit that in line with the Constitution of the Republic and the property laws, the proportion of the bill is the draft law of the general application that will allow under certain circumstances a proportion of their property and the land without compensation. We support the person bill twenty twenty so as to distribute property and land to address the centuries-old nation grievance of the land and property force disposition. We support the framework in the bill in the line with the Constitution to guide the process and procedure for expropriation of the property, including land by the organs of the state. We support in particular clause twelve C, which allows where expropriation without compensation may be just equitable in terms of the concern in the public interest of property and the land and back for the social economy reform and redistribution. We support that expropriation authority in the state. See, this bill is about public interest and public purpose and must determine those instead where compensation may be paid, clause twelve A, and where no compensation will be paid, clause twelve C. That is a function of the government and the courts. And if anyone has a grievance, they have the right to approach the court. Courts cannot be the ones of the make determine of the compensation or not compensation. I so submit. Thank you very much.
Hello? Thank you Chairperson of the session and greetings to the house. My name is Bongani Ngwenya, who reside in ward fifteen, Deofonten F, that forms part of Teminsile Municipality. As the ANC, we support expropriation of property and land as just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land and expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. For the ANC, this is about redressing the historical injustice, dispossession of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, redistribute asset and promote social economic transformation. The ANC program to provide a way to address the land question and to build productive asset for our people. Therefore, we support the bill. I thank you.
Can you please wait a little bit? One more. We use rows, so if we say one more, it must be from that row. Thank you. You missed that.
My name is Shoki Giyane, from one twenty, Steve Twete, ANC. I would begin by saying let the land go back to its owners, the original owners of the land. We support the bill because our elders were tortured and vulnerable. And secondly, there are beneficiaries to this land. It has its rightful owners. Thank you so much.
Meena, I'm supporting the bill. The ANC supports exploration of property and land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land. And that expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process.
And that expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. Inkina yetu inkulu, Sashaewa ubaba lawyer, owa figure on 1652, oktua guchanfan ribikin. Chanfan ribikin lo, wasusupshungu. Chanfan ribikin lo, uesane kepesake, oktua otro metaris. Esangisasisa, esangisasalepa, ikepesake. Guti chanfan ribikin lo, angimfuni, wasusupshungu. Nabazalibetu, nabokoko betu, guchanfan ribikin. Watatanabafasbetu. Guchanfan ribikin, wa kote sabomkulu betu. Nga Bong, anitim. Ntala guti manje skena gen. Umxhaba maubuyele, maubuyele guwanigazi, maubuyele git. Sitala gabshunga snanda ozokshala, ngengaya lo waba. Namshanja, ngegasamkomba, lo guchanfan ribikwa ama. Angegasimkomba, wasusupshungu. Sitala gutu umxhaba, maubuyele kuaba ni git. Ngoba wasusupshungu, namshanja, skonoglima. Abantona betu, namshanja, bape minya upe. Ngoba namshanja, abazu timelebe nse nchan. Nga Bong.
Greetings to all the elders from the Parliament and our leaders from our organization. My name is Nomsa Estamnisi, from the Estif Tuate, Nkangala, Word 22. I am fully in support of the bill in order to restore the dignity to our people because we were hurt by a certain man called Jan Van Ribek in 1952, who arrived with his useless ships, misled our ancestors and stole the land from our ancestors. Today, we stand in unison and say, we want our land back. We don't have places to stay, no farms. Our children are addicts because we are stranded. We don't have anywhere to go. I thank you.
Ngimela, ngazo, okulme la e billo, kuti e billo nami. Nga vuma lenda ve e billo kuti no, istukumeze gakulu from 1912. Amakavane etu aluelala e billo kutu umxhaba maubuyele git. Kotza zanguenseke na namshanja, sugu umeslik netlangano yonke gakongolose. Sialo asulela lumxhaba, koto astoli impumelelo, yokuwela nimpendulo e right. Parameende iyeza, iminyaga naminyaga, iso addressa indaba ye lo, yomxhaba ngapandu wesne pesen. Besen, baba ngabuyi nede pategayo. Kushtingala, uti parameende may hampa, ma namshanja. May buyen nede pategayo, ngoba sikukeela laglenetlangano, koto astoli impendulo e pategayo. Sikela impendulo e pategayo, manibu ya food. Neshutigala omaka mama fishana, Nga Bong.
Greetings to the members of Parliament and the traditional House. My name is Zanele Masego, from Word 7. In 1912, our comrades fought hard for the restoration of our land with no success. Today, we stand with the very same issue. Parliament came and went back without any tangible feedback. But today, can they please bring tangible and solid feedback to our cries? Because we really want our land back without compensation. Thank you so much.
Us being here today already is wasteful expenditure. Because these resources that we're using here could have been utilized elsewhere. If we were here when you came to speak up to us about Section 25, that whenever we speak to expropriation, we are not going to consider compensation. We should not have to be repeating that now. The government does not have money. So how are you going to be compensating? You have a whole chapter in this bill speaking about compensating, but you know you have no money. So let's not waste each other's time. As we said when we're discussing Section 25, there will be no compensation. Expropriate as long as it deals with ensuring that we improve the lives of South Africans and the livelihood thereof. And secondly, there are things that we must not keep repeating again to you guys because when you go to Parliament, you are representing us with the method that you have a mandate. You do not have a mandate for what you're doing now. Let's start focusing on things that are going to take us forward so that you can ensure we're going to improve the lives of South Africans in time. So no, this expropriation bill with property, if it has compensation, is wasting our time. Whenever you expropriate, we do not want to compensate. Thank you.
Greetings to the people in the House. My name is Sandy Sile Nogani, from Emala Lheni. Chairperson, the expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction. And we see it as a way to hijack the struggles of black people. And it will not solve the challenges of land. This sitting is just a waste of money that is supposed to go to schools, to help with basaries and things. The government must stop wasting money and give land to the people back.
Greetings to all MPs in the House. What I'll say is, why should the land be bought back with money? It is useless because when the land was taken from us, there were no monetary agreements. Why should now they monetize everything? Thank you.
All protocol observed. My name is Lucas Dumisani Stolle. I'm a Chairperson of the EFF in Word 6, Dr. J. Morocco, in Nkangala. Chairperson, we do not understand why Parliament wastes spending so much money in this process when there's a process which is amending the Constitution. And after amending the Constitution, the committee must bring as a legislation. We made our submission in two public Parliament hearings on the land question. And we told the members of the Parliament to go and amend the Constitution as to allow the expropriation of the land without compensation into the custody of the state. We are concerned that the expropriation bill, that you want us to put an input on it. It's a legislation that must tell us, now that the Constitution allows for the expropriation of the land without compensation, this is how the state is going to distribute the land. And this is how the land should be expropriated to everyone. But since you are here, you must know that our position remains the same. We want all the land to be expropriated without compensation. And this is the only way we will address the colonial land dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. We did not give Parliament a mandate to find the ways to pay the land which was stolen. Our land is not a commodity, therefore it should not be for sale. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction. And we see it as a way to hijack the real struggle of the black people and will not solve the land challenges. The money that is available to pay for the land, it should be used for the black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, to build houses and to build business. And this expropriation bill is not going to help us in any way of doing these things. No legislation is above the Constitution. I thank you.
I thank you, Chairperson, and everyone that you are with. My name is Joel Matlila. I'm a Prime Secretary in J.S. Morocco. Now, I am here to confirm that as the ANC, we are not confused. We have actually mandated you to go ahead with this process. Therefore, what this process seeks to achieve is what we agree with. And I therefore maintain that we actually support the process. I thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson. My name is Jeffrey Amozoi. Now, I want to say that we, I support their bringing back of the land. And I also want to say that they did not buy this land. So why should we buy it? And again, if we get the land, that will help us in creating work because there is a lot of unemployment. So I call on everyone to support this bill. I thank you.
Greetings to all. I am Jonas Msweni, a resident under the Tembesile High Municipality. I have a complaint. Since 1999, we've been claiming for land which we never found to date. We live in poverty with our children. Employment is rife. The government must help us. There are those who keep destroying our graves. We're pleading for a piece of land so we can plow and farm in it. What government that does not listen to its people? Thank you so much.
Okay, we are in that row. Uba ba is going to be number one. Number two. Number three. Number four. Can you give him, please? Number five. Yeah. Number six. Uba ba, we we jacket here, yeah. And then when you reach there, you stop.
Abanga na gusha, abanga limigo. Ika vameti, isni kizinto zoksebenza. Siwazu kulisa umnoto si South Africa. Siwazu kulisa umnotosi is South Africa. Uglima lokwa agufuneluguti minangi beriche. Gifuna kuti abantu base is South Africa. Nabu, babe, nabagzuzavu, ngapagati, wenkisuzavu. Ngiatogoze.
I thank and greet you all in the house. I am Meewa Joseph Masombuka, a local resident. I thank you so much for the opportunity. For the past seven years, I've been attending these kinds of meetings, filling in forms, but nothing has happened so far. Since we cry for our land back, our farms have turned to forest. There's nothing that you can do that can be fruitful there. So we need our land back so to support the nation through poverty. We plead for equipments also to be assisted by the government so we can cap the unemployment that is so rife in our communities where we stay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair of the Session. Allow me to take this opportunity to greet the leadership of the African National Congress present today in our midst, led by its regional chair, Comrade S.K. Marshilo, councillors present today in our midst, executive mayors, members of the provincial legislature and indeed the national legislature. Mangitatalil Tuba, Program Director, Ngikulisa Ukubulisupkosi, Ngitibayet in the visit. I am Comrade Sizwe from Ward 18, which is Tembesile Hani Local Municipality, representing the African National Congress Yudlik. Chair, today I rise as the son of the soil who has dispossessed of land by the 1913 June Act as the result of the past racial discriminatory laws, which was passed in parliament, which excluded us as African people. Chair, as young people, we are in support of the expropriation of land without compensation. Because I personally support the framework in the bill in line with the constitution to guide the process and the procedures for the expropriation of property which is land. And it must be, it must be in line with the constitution. Chair, we are supporting this bill driven by the Freedom Charter and the 54th Resolution of the African National Congress, which was taken in Nazareth in 2017. Chair, in section 25, which is point two and point five of the constitution, states that property may be expropriated only in terms of the law, in terms of the law by a general application, which is equal to the session which we are indeed partaking today as we speak. And lastly, Chair, the state must be a reasonable legislative and other measures within its available resources to foster condition which enables citizens to gain access to land on an equitable land. And yes, indeed, this is the function of the government, not the courts. We therefore, Chair, as young people, support this bill because we fully believe that this bill shall address the triple challenges which is indeed faced by our people. And ensuring that the bill indeed is passed, we are in belief, Chair, that the restoration of our people's dignity shall be restored. And moving forward, people will be introduced, Chair, in line with giving them access to land, shall give them food and other means of productivity and life itself. By so doing, Chair, we fully believe, lastly, that indeed, if we can work together collectively in passing this bill, we shall restore that. Indeed, we go back to the basic whereby people eat organic food which is driven by organic people, people who own the land which are Africans. I thank you, Chair.
Ngiatogoza imkunislalo. Ngithome ngoklochisa obkosi obkona ngapagatwenda o. Ngilochise ipalamente yoke yekona. Ngibuyen ngilochise no vholi obkona be ANC. Angizukwa mute kulunangizukwa mfychani. Meena Ikamalame Ngiguchanwakan Kabinde from Ward 25, la Tembesile Hani. Single ANC, eh, Ward 25. We support expropriation of land without any compensation. Ngiatogoze.
In a nutshell, I'd like to thank you, Chair. Greetings to the TRC House, available in the MPs and the ANC leadership. I am John Kabine from Ward 25 in Tembesile Hani. I stand in full support of the expropriation of land without compensation. I thank you.
Waimimopila halena. Ki John Wahamakula. Rata hudumerisha parlamente luhui lewoha. Levayeta pele, kamuka walele mu. Hotahu thusha, kapomuthumohu ta horahatela. Tawa ekinyakahu yubulela kuhuri. Yekintisi chemo ybile inkapeli cha. Tetsokolo e ilohuri nawiyaleka mutumuntsukia sokola. Ke sappota le bakalahuri, section 25. Relatele kamukwilinga tenka hubusanaha. Ntlele tefu. Heli kali buxetanaha, ntlele tefu. Retarikpele moho. Kauroho nawiyano repele waleka di macha uji. Ntweki nyakangu yubulela kuhuri. Hutuana kuwepu baskona gama, batwa baonyaka medzi oridilo se nirilemku India. Khuilo hawa lemo tata bakurba thokemezi. Then Van Ribek ilohu djal. Azela moplegenyarena elenyasouth Africa. Anyaka horaka irala batwa lediloza huja pili. Heba thozwala pele kahu yako India. Kahe nebatshenyake munezi baskefia. Basokolakaskefia. Yale babona hori ireplana ri kavichi diloze nihoribakonokra ri vitamine bape. Hutu hamoho. Batwa ba lemo hori barichela maruo arena, barichela nahaya reina. Kamukwilinga hori. Nahayara na enonne, barichusha mohu unonnehu. Barisha moplegenyelinrai eyo mileyu. Aina silo, aina matama medzi acha tuiu. Bona barichela. Honako barichusha barisipilanleku. Basala ba ipadi plek. Mutu omuwan ilohu omushewu. Unali pleke ewkulue avelempere zepedi kamo harri. Haplege yewu. Pareje pedi uhuva je tar. Moala renaba sutu. Re kubukani waleka di nozi felehu ti. Kusnan tweru kona hori ipiri cha kayo. Banabarina ba sokola batwa kalemo ilohu bakakona kuhupe lansi, lema batele waha banao. Kata wa yamu tu o atiling elenyan Van Ribek. Aru utusha batwa habo urbaskatswa re kiskefia. Mara, achiaplege ayidira ya hai. Waleki sappota yu na section 25. Hori nahayewu ntlele tefu. Kantla osi nyaswaga lebatwalinga monte. Kiaba thompahuri. Batewa konohu to latela sebananilesona. Lelena thompandi polelo zeru dibeli. Eska fika kuala dibia kabu haraha dustbin. Lidibuledi shere nyagana he ebuu yera nyaka. Ngialewa.
Thank you, Chairperson, for this opportunity. My name is John Makula. I want to thank you for coming here to provide help to our people. Now, as black people, we are suffering. So I want to say that I support section 25, which is about the expropriation of land without compensation. Now, the problem started with the arrival of John Van Ribek. Now, they stopped here in Africa looking for fresh water. Now, after having found that water, instead of proceeding with their journey going to India, they then started getting deeper into our land. And they then removed us from the arable land that we were staying in. Now, they then gave the land to white people. White people have huge hectares of land. And you'll find that that particular white person stays in that huge hectare of land with only two horses, while we, black people, are packed up in a small area. And our children are suffering. Now, I want to reiterate that I support section 25. And I'm asking you to pass our message to the rightful people. You shouldn't just take our inputs and throw them into the dustbin. I thank you.
Thank you, Sizwala. Omela Pamwenu, Ikama Umanlambo from Ward 18, Dr. JS Morocco Municipality. Ngibingelele umkunislalo ngapambili, le komiti yake. Nbingelele futino Chairperson we region, ubaba Uspeedy Marshilo. Nabobonke abakonala. Apat. Now, Chairperson, we angale njengokuti single African National Congress sia isapota lepe yoktata umshaba, ngapandla ngopezelis. Ah, Chairperson, ngaba ngopezelis. Asu tatalumshama. Bau tata, bau tata ngoegwen zuzula. Bau tata nginkani. Azanga bautgele, bau tata. So manje su kokelanjani futi. Su kokelanjani. Asu tatalumshaba sngaba ngopezelis. Sia isapota lepe. Lababeenza Chairperson, intlabalehithe. Bati i komiti akoi mosimal. Ngoguzala izogenza this public participation. Sia itogoze la futi Chairperson. Single ANC, Ward 18, sia isapota lepe. Thank you very much.
I'm Mr. Umanlambo from Dr. JS Morocco. I greet you, Chair. I also greet Honorable Marshilo. As members of the ANC, we support expropriation of land without compensation. Actually, Chair, don't even think of compensating. The land was taken by force. People did not ask for it. Why should we pay for it? Those who say when you come here with your team are wasting money, we oppose them. We want land back. Let's compensate. Thank you. I'm sorry, Chair. We want the land back and let us take it back.
Thank you, Chairperson, and your encouragement. My name is Phineas Dr. Makatu. I come from Ward 3 in Muloato, Tembesile Hani Local Municipality, Andangkangala District. Chair, our country has seen a peaceful political transition since 1994. The transition on land and economic distribution has never followed. Twenty-seven years later, the land is still under the minority. This land was acquired through violent means and was distributed amongst themselves. Our forefathers were compensated with dead bodies and were not allowed into land that is productive. We were moved to uncultivated land which has got no dams and rivers. And in some cases where they made a mistake of identifying the underground minerals, they later came back and removed us when they identify such materials underground. We support the expropriation bill as the African National Congress, as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and that expropriation of such without compensation is part of that process. The land must be expropriated, and we are saying without compensation. The Freedom Charter states very clearly that the land shall belong to all who live in it, including us who are disadvantaged and who are disadvantaged by this dispossession. And we further say, Chair, that the state must become an authority once this bill has been passed. And we also ask the Chair to accord those who say they are confused by this process, a counseling process, so that they can feel at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Greeting to you and your collective, also to the leadership in the house.
My name is Impostor Matang from Ward 25, Prime Secretary, under the stewardship of Speedy Marshilo, the Chairperson of the region and the collective. Chairperson, we are all here because of tax. Whites gangsta from Europe come to South Africa with one purpose, only to steal our land. Today, they have eighty-seven percent on their head. Particularly men. As the ANC, we support the bill hundred percent without compensation. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairperson. Let me pass my greetings to the Chair of the Region, Comrade S.K. Marshilo, the Executive Mayor of Tembesile Hani and also the members of the Portfolio Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure. My name is James Makuiding. I'm from Ward 1, Tembesile Hani Local Municipality. I'm the member of the African National Congress. Now, I just want to firstly commend the Portfolio Committee in terms of compliance regarding the COVID regulations. We appreciate and we observe that with cautious that we are still on level one and COVID still exists. In terms of the expropriation bill, we want to support as the African National Congress. We support the amendment of section 25 of the Constitution of South Africa Act 108 of 1996. And it must be explicit in terms of how should the land be distributed without compensation. And we also appreciate the political parties that support this bill because that is the policy of the African National Congress. And anybody who supports the policies of the ANC will also get cooperation from the political party, which is the ruling party. But let me be specific in terms of the section, clause 12 subsection C, which allows where appropriation without compensation must be just and equitable in terms of the constitution and the public interest for the property and land embarked for socio-economic reform and redistribution. And we also support clause 12 subsection A and where no compensation must be made or be paid. That is clause 12 subsection C. And in terms of expropriation authority, we are saying we support the government, the state, to be the authority. And anybody who is not satisfied will be approaching the courts. And we are supporting the bill because as the African National Congress, we are embarking on the program of liberation of Africans in particular and blacks in general from the political socio-economic bondage. And where majority of people are poor, and majority of whom are women. Thank you very much.
Greetings to all the members of the Portfolio Committee eh, in their hierarchy. Not mentioning everyone because we see the House was fully since in the morning. Now it's, it's late, let me not waste any time. Eh, just to represent the black community especially, including other communities that will support what I'm gonna say.
I'm, my name is Mapena Freddy, from Ward 28 Tembisile Municipality. I'm representing African Peoples' Convention, APC. And I'm also the Deputy Chair in the Province. We are fully supporting the Section 25. And also, we were waiting for so long. As Africans, before 1652, or whenever the years, that other people came into our African land and took our land for free, and now we're talking about compensation. We are going to be hundred percent sure that we are every day going to be saying without any compensation. We believe as APC members that this land is related. We, we do not, we're not calling for to be eh, our nation in future or anytime to come. It has been our nation for years and years. It is our nation now, and it is to be our nation in future because nature makes us to be here before anyone. I'm very disappointed regarding the matter that belongs to the traditional leaders. Because as APC, we also fully support the traditional leaders in this act, in this compensation, Section 25, to say they have been every time before 1652, as I said before, at the early years, the years 1200, 1400, and other years. Since our ancestors were in this land, until now, where we are saying in, from 1994 till today or in years to come, we are in a democratic nation. Our traditional leaders were not properly given full report how this land was taken or how this land, the process is going and how it is going to be finalized. It is still an occurring situation every time. So this process is, we are now trying, we are asking a speedily, a speedily research and recover and bring the report to our nation. Because our nation is full of hunger.
We also acknowledge the presence of the Deputy Chairperson of the provincial leader, leadership of APC amongst our midst, Sia Bongha Gogusa Ne Timba, APC. Gule Nklangala, thank you.
Engabonga Cheperson for the opportunity. Eh, me vitaramina itande kawakama chombozi. Eh, nisi isi member laka APC ndithama a Dr. JS Moroka Almasdrifsi. Eh, tanir APC yina, we are fully support the expropriation of land without compensation. Ilankute makayaku, lokukuri irenamshaba, inamfu mo. Loku irenamshaba inamfu mo, and ilankute makayaku land is our pride and dignity. Se, kunavukuntsan vungan louvenzeka akula amshabeni. Ilankute lokuku yikume land will be stopping the abuse from outside powers. Through land will improve our people's lives. So, yina yir APC ya Isapota, ende fuji ileka yona, ende fuji ya thembakuru namusha lokui iteka yinaliswi mitekui consultanti, mitasenda liswimi sitelela, mita enda imkuluivalanga balabala yowoku balaba yini, kuvele yina ya sapoto ku, ku fane ku, kunikiwa amshaba ivye lakavani. Because swesu yina ipenduke ku itiforeinas kamsaba wa yina, then tiforeinas tabusala yina yir kona, ser yina ya sapota yir APC na kens.
Our apologies Slalo, the, the mem- the member of the community spoke in Chitzonga. We do not have in our team a person who can translate, who can interpret in to English. I request Slalo if maybe the member can present a submission to the table, just as a suggestion.
Greetings, Cheperson and your panel. My name is Jones Kosana, EFF member from Ward 25 here in Tembisile. As EFF, we made our submission into Parliament Public Hearing on the land question. And we told members of Parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow for the expropriation of land without compensation into the custody of the state. But since you are here, you must know that our position remain the same. We want all land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address the colonial and the dispossession of the legacy of apartheid. We did not give Parliament a mandate to find a way to pay for the land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and should not be forsaken. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction and we see it as a way to hijack the real struggles of the black people and will not solve the challenges of the land. The money that is available to pay for the land must be given back to small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their, their land to farm, build houses, and build businesses. The expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of this. No legislative is above constitution, yabo.
Eh, okay, we'll do it this way. Number one. Go to that chair. Eh, number two, number three. Ozo teta mama? Isa? No, everyone is going to speak who is here. Eh, Magai? Magaza in this chair, this chair. Can you please sit down? Eh, Magaza, Isa, number four? Ya, four, five, eh? Eh? Ozo abata? Eh? Yes? Ah, no, Akapagamisanga santi. Okay. Nige, eh? That one? Isa apa? Ah, no, yeah. Eh, o putu, neti teta, emnyam, eh, o teta putu? No, I, I, I want you to give them, then we must have a second row. So actually, we don't have someone coming in here now. Yes? So he's the last one, eh? So, no one will come in, kengogoati is, he wants to speak. He's the last one, thank you.
Yabonga Mknisaloo, eh, Ngibingalele Wonkama Lunga, Reportfolo Committee, eh, Le Leadership yir EFF. Ikamaalam ngurendu wakamkwena, ibwea Ward 26, Tembisilehani. Cheperson, we don't understand why the Parliament is still spending money on this pro- on this progress when there is a process to amend the constitution and thereafter amending the constitution. This committee must bring as a legislation informed by the constitution. We sup- we, we made our submission, our submissions into Parliament, into two Parliament Public Hearings on the land question. And we, and we told the members of the Parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow the expropriation of land without compensa- without compensation into the custody of the state. We are, we are concerned, we are concerned that the expropriation bill you, you, the expropriation bill that you, you want us to make input, it's too... Sorry, we are concerned that the expropriation bill that you want us to make input on this legislation must tell us now that the constitution allow, allow, allow for the expropriation of land without compensation. This is how the state is going to expropriate land. This is how the land is going to be distributed to all, everyone equally. And this is how the right to use the land is going to be protected. Eh, Mknisaloo, jenga bantu bagiti, esasuswa endawenzza semaplasini, saletu akule ndawo, eh, abomkulu be bafuile, banezinkomo, bana yonkinto. Gotosete nasaletu akulomshaba, sisuswe mshabeni, lasi belatele kona, wafi zinkomo, wafa yonkinto. Eh, besinwata nda oguti ipalamende yonke yinaspida pale process, eh, yokbisela gomshaba Ngapandle Gugnngapeseliso, yabonga.
Cheperson, where we were removed forcefully from farms where we used to stay, we had livestock. But when we came to these areas now that we live at, all our livestock died. So we would be happy if Parliament could speed up this process, thank you.
Eh, firstly, I would like to, to thank the Chairperson of the session, members of the Parliament, the leadership of the African National Congress that is here. Eh, my name is Nomen Gom. Eh, I'm coming from eh, Ward 21, Tembisilehani Municipality. One of the wars that was once visited by the ANC's Centenary Torch. Eh, well, we remember that the people of South Africa were disposs- was dispossessed of their land by the then notorious regime of Louis Porter, who became the Prime Minister of South Africa in 1910, when the white-only Parliament was formed. In 1913, a year after the formation of the African National Congress, Louis Porter's regime passed the Land Act. For so many years, we suffered the repercussions of the Land Act. And we have seen the following government, white-only governments that followed, each like the PEC government of 1924, the 1948 eh, government of TF Malan, and also the government of eh, PEC Porter and others. They also dispossessed our people their land. So as the African National Congress, we say the ANC supports expropriation of property and land as a just and equitable pro- process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing both access to property and land. That, that expropriation of such without compensation is, is part of that process. For the ANC, this is about redressing historical injustice and disposition of the black majority. It is also vital, a vital opportunity to unlock growth, rest- distribute assets, assets, and promote socio-economic transformation. The ANC's program provides a way to address land question and build productive assets to our people. We are guided by our 54th National Conference Revolution, which states eh, open code. Expropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanism available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution. We submit that in line with the Constitution of the Republic and the property clause. The expropriation bill is the draft law of general application that will allow, under certain circumstances, expropriation of property and land without compensation. We support the ex- expropriation bill so as to redistribute property and land to address the centuries-old national grievance.
I am Julia Masango, Ward 26. I support the bill so that people can get employment, so that we can be able to educate our kids and fix roads, thank you. Hello, can I try this one? Okay, my name is Julia Masango, from Ward 26. I support the bill because it will enable us to get employment and we will also be able to educate our kids and we will even have infrastructure such as roads fixed. Thank you. I am Jacobs Kosana. We support the expropriation bill without compensation. In the past and during the times of our ancestors, eh, the people who came were just staying side by, living side by side with our forefathers. They did not buy the land. So as time went on, they then took the land from our ancestors and made our ancestors to become their workers. to become their workers. With specific reference to a farm in Red Flay, three-nine-seven JS, we made a claim and we were given a lease. That is why we request government to speed up this, this process. When the lease expired or lapsed, we went, we were at that time eh, owning about hundred and eighty cows. Now they do not want to renew the lease. And what are we going to do with one hundred and eighty cows? Where can we take them? We can't take them anywhere. I also have twenty, sixty-five goats around Guamshanga. Please speed up the claims and speed up this process. Thank you.
Ngenkuchese ikamalame, nokchala wa yo namchangi, ituba elisep, eh, espelon. Mina ikamalame, ngikucha bladi poich kosana. Ngihlala esansiti, si buya Emetlbeke, enraweni ebizwa ngoguti ngesmdebele hingobi. Ngine temba lo oguti, lenrawo, inge ella way thousand hectares. Si ba bando ba wa eighteen hundred, kleyo nda. Ngisakati, inaha ilhamgulanga bona inti ndeti, batomu ilhamgulanga bona inti ndeti, aba, aba mtsok. Baybizanga makamaskua, bayisigela ana, goba maritflay nama poshine, nezinyen, ezwe inda. Manje ngifuna ogoba mbitani ka nani, oze, ngengekwa lelabani skati. Inaha yetu ya tleni. Iti mayana itlenye inaha, sanige loa ama liso, nezinyen, mara basutelela eposhinin e one, e bizwa ngoguto eposhin four. Nde, nigeh, bastembisa, lapa vasnegesekona, vasnegesiliso, bastembisa second trendja, second trendja basapumelili ama ansati naswato uluguto wa yama sasneges. And then, nigeh, ngene imai, emashtangotini, wa, 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 yonleona, goba se bizwa nama poshin, se poshin four. And then, nigeh, bastembisile, si bamba na bimchanga, imai nejengajesa, kitu isakleyo nda. And then, i, imai nava sasatendi, i governmenti sasatendi. Sestra regile nalapaspo alsekwa nama form, nama form katakwaliso, tiwe, nabatumu kitu isandenu, kunama ten percent uavanu. Sestra regile oguti, singenzanjani, oze, inaha yobuye, tinina kutu ya tleni. Enaya puma, ndenina paswe governmenti. Eni governmenti yasijela lo, i kupile ngapaswa nama puma. Mara siyalarera jengajesa, stemsipai yes, oguti makpe la liso, na yin gavuzeli, na yin gavuzeli liso, izosnige la ina, jengajesa sasatendi, wamungu. Se bana nde batumela, abanye, abanu batu bavela gu governmenti. Se basama gusposha ina, eliso. Basama gusposha, agna ten percent, naswabiza, goba tanga iskati, bas ansapai, four months, six months. Babu yekutu ba kulme ansa assisazi, kuswabo oguti, namchangi gi thogoze i governmenti in ruins le, oguti, singathola usis, guyo. Agna ten percent, ene gushomula i governmenti, se ekesnyan, ama nyama poshin veli governmenti kbagi, imai nila. Enelakunya skoni, ngene lela, skoni ngwenza, tinasesha megule poshin zero one. Yonagui inaha ekubi, ikamalaya wagu hingobi, mara jee, ikamba gama poshin, poshin three, poshin four, poshin five, inge ella way thousand hectares. Ngithogoze.
Ngibakuzi kamalenda olé baba?
Ikamalenda, ngesinu, emandulu, hingobi.
Hingoobi.
Hingoobi, norma iya hingo.
Okay.
Iya, manje ge se bizwa ge respray.
Sia thoroza, sia thoroza. Greetings to parliament, my name is Jablanis Kossana. We, before nineteen thirteen, before land was taken from us, we, we are the generation that comes from an area that is over one thousand hectares, which was now later divided in places like Red Flay. We made a claim, which was successful, government gave us a five-year lease on the claim. The area was then divided into a number of portions. So we were promised the second, the fourth and the second, the second and the fourth portion. But later then, mines were developed in the area, and mines are producing as we talk. Mines and government are now ignoring us. We were promised some ten percent from the production of mines. Nothing has come up to now, and we are very worried about this. This is the reason why we support the bill for expropriation of land without compensation. Thank you.
Lochan. Ikamalame, ngikucha wansawosko san, Dr. Moroka. Mina ngukuma indaba yeplasa, oguti, solo banbatli mama, solisakli mama plaza, solo agna, agna pendulo oguti sitole indaba se plaza. Asakolu thola ipenduro, oguti solukuma yama pasi, ma plasin. Amakua, aba mtsok, batkocha, abandu beketu. Eh, eh, plasin leka, bati ba lima, fuya hingomo. Manje ba oskati sektua, basukose ba pume, goba puma bachinge ipi, goba neenkomo, sesi nengi, ba fueraati, ba nemiyara iminingi, basala yema plasin, bakulile yema plasin, abanin babelitwele yema plasin, ya thoroza, oguti ngoko, ke ba wonellele indaba le, ya ma plasi, kani honellele, ngenelele, nevomte tu, ya thoroza.
My name is Jona, my name is Johannes Kossana. We also made a claim on a number of farms, but up to now, we haven't got, we haven't received any response to that. And black people who used to stay on those farms before they were remu- were removed, used to farm and they had live, like livestock. As things stand now, we have nothing. We, we, we request you to speedily look into the issue of the farms. Thank you so much.
Sanbonani, ikamalame ngipopi mabona, eh, ward twenty-six, a member of ANC. Namgya isapota, oguti, umchaba awuele gubani gazi, abokoko wetu, gaboba nineteen sixty be basokolo, sitole umsebenz, muphela lala.
Greetings, I am Popi Mabona, and I'm an, I'm an ANC member. I support the bill so that we can get employment. Thank you.
Niabona, okturali ituba, ikamalame, ngulindiwe wakamalangu, from Steve Schwedt, the local municipality, ward twenty-eight, gorigi yetu, are being led by our honourable, honourable Speed Machilo, as an ANC Women's League in Kangala region, guided by the fifty-fourth National Conference Resolution, stated as follows, appropriation of land without compensation should be among the key mechanism available to government to give effect to land reform and redistribution. We support a particular clause, which is clause twelve C, which allows where appropriation without appropriation may be just and equitable in terms of constitution and in the public interest of the property and land earmark for socio-economic reform and redistribution. We support that as appropriation authority is the state, since the bill is about public interest and public purpose and must be determined by those interests. But we are saying again, the court function, we are saying the court cannot determine who must get a land. This is the interest of the people, the people must talk on it and be rewarded as such. So we're saying as the ANC Women's League, black people were robbed of their lands and were denied of their cultural activities, were cut off their spiritual with their ancestors by the time of apartheid regime. We are saying that the land must be brought back to our people, especially the black people. Black people cannot suffer whereas they got their land, that is productive, and that land is lying right now. The land does not have a owner, whereas we are, the black people are here as the owner of the land. As the ANC Women's League, we want to register that the le- the bill of expropriation of land must be appropriated without any compensation. We thank you so much.
Greetings to you all. I hope by the name of Dimakazomoloto, ANC Youth, Steve Chater, ward twenty-eight. I support the bill of bringing back our land. Bringing back our land will make many opportunities for many people and will also open doors for them. They won't ever suffer in their lives, I think.
Sanbonani, omela oma mkhana su Elizabeth Masomboga, ibuya eh, ward twenty-nine. Niabona, namchangi, uma i parlamenti ye yati ufuma izothanga weza, inkinga ze yetu. Esitlali ngafakati we kaya, goma kaya, sinnila singasugutisuzo ulile napi, sildula ama parlamenti, ngamateksi, ngamabasi, sitinahi i parlamenti, gota wazgutunya ngokosa, ngene guo, usho iskalosaku muupi. Parlamenti, niabona, oguzagwe nufakati wetu. Siné kalo ezinga fele. Sikala oguti, uma nisheli etafle, jongova namchangi bezile, abandana bantu, ngenda o, ngenda o, bazoka. Aganiziso, ya kalo les, goba noguno, noguenza gabo, sikonukmo oguti i parlamenti is tatasirias, yesi liso ezu, ezu shoy. Gungoba, namchangi, kunama fem, akiwe, ama fem la amile uchan, abandana betu, sitlali navo emakaya, abanayo imsebenz, asishu oguti i parlamenti, gungoba unemali. Sushu oguti aspamisane, nisusukumespono oguti siyenzanjani le. Oguzale, abandana bako oguti nabo, babenek sasa elise. Bayapi, abandana betu, basheli emafo, emafoe, ema komples mapema, inya upe. Uma umbuzo oguti waile ndo uyipema, oguti ngenzeno, goba afnamsebenz. Si alimala bazali, si alimala, sikala oguti i parlamenti, ge ilhamanisa makanda, sibonele yoguti senzacha. Ya isapota ANC, uma iti ifuna, inda o, sipiyo yonamahali. Konta ganga, ganane ngala ma fem, esega akiwe la wa, ama konukvu, parliament, kala oguti paramisama kaos, do something for us, please, to the grand floor. Bye.
Greetings to parliament, my name is Elizabeth Masomboga, in ward twenty-nine. Thank you so much, parliament, for coming. We used to see parliament from afar. We are happy that today you are here, you can listen to us. And when you hold meetings, please listen to our plea and take us seriously. There are firms or factories that have now become white elephants, and our kids are unemployed. And I'm not putting the blame on parliament, I'm simply saying, let's work together to better, let's work together to better the lives of our children. Most of our children have now fall, fallen into smoking yao upe, and therefore parliament will request you that you can help us. I support the ANC for this expropriation bill. Eh, please, parliament, pull up your socks. Thank you.
Angthogoze, Mtenisla loe langa, tomengoglochisa zoke integiles konala, gibuye eh, ngiti epcosini esnavu, ngiti bayete, inga koshwa ge nglochisa. Abas, abaspete we umalanga, tomengoglochisa umma ongunu, ongunu nakuluwa la pekaya umma uri, uri filizi banamtsueni. Nglochise ubaba ongr- ongritinal chepesen, wala in Kangala, waba Speed Machilo, gibuya nglochise ubaba umchonichwa, ongu honourable deputy speaker, Uche J. Skosana, abwe, abeng chepesen we province, eh, ngutinlesanku. Mina ngifranz Gabini, ovela indawena se Dr. J. Smoroka. Eh, ngiti, ngizela, ngithogoze, ngizela ngithogoza ituba engi, engi funiyene. Angithome, ngoguti, ubuisela, in, in, ubuisela we inaha, ngapandle gogune chese liso. In, inaha, ya tatoa, ngapandle, gogusi zuelo, uksungu, nogubuisela wa yo, agubenjalo. Nasikuluma nginaha, askulumi gomango uotoa. Kune zenjiwa, ngapadwe naha, kune mbandaana, namchana inya maza, kune fuyo, bekoti, kune mila. Kiwabo nyana yonke indo efuniyanega, ngapakati we naha, eskuluma ngai uli. Sifu nyane, njengo ba injalo. Angkulmele inaha yange kethu, mina la inongo ya mi, ya sala konan, la i, 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 ifemeli ami, ya vele tewa konan, ya sala konan, enacheniele nklufu. Ilanau ya eh, eh, indawo nevetpanka, ifoyo kfigala pa eplochwe. Kune ndlela, ngena, ge, ge, gesnelen, inaha ngkuluma ngai uli, ngiti la nklufu ngileyo. Si bago oguti inaha leo, njengo ba safaga isbao. Si bago oguti sifu nyane, njengo ba injalo, siwa zu oguti nati, siwa zu kpe la, njeng- njeng ngeminye imende. Singashtolis minyazele ne, ngapadwe we, 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 we charta linye, si masuma machanu, o, o, si, si lusumi nava chanu. Ekben, abandu, abandu wamshopi, utola, a, 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 a ona indau, ayekwa, namchana baba tatu, eh, charte. Indau, eskuluma gomango, onga ngi fifteen hectares, basala baba tatu ngabo, kune nyama zana, kune mbandaana, kune, 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 kune plasi, bane nroyoke, marathina, ngapadwe charta linye, eh, eh, ngaba twenty by forty meters, fane sali si fifteen. Songya utola zage, pekot, pekot, ya thoroza ikata ngub, elte tue, mbuso we kupet.
Greetings, chair, and greetings to the royal house. I also want to greet the, our authorities in Pumalanga, me, zipanamtsueni, honourable Speed Machilo, the deputy speaker, J. S. Kossana. My name is Franz Gabini from Dr. J. S. Moroka municipality. We support eh, we support expropriation without compensation. In fact, land was taken from us painfully. It should be brought back to us painfully. We not just talking about empty space, we are, we are not just talking about a valley, but we're talking about livestock, animals, rivers. We need all that back. I was born in an area just before you reached Witbank called Langluf. We made a claim on that land, and we would like to receive it back just as it is, as it looks. We cannot afford to be squashed in a, in, in a one yard, where you find that there are about fifteen people staying in one yard, while you find white people owning a fif- three white people owning a fifteen hectare farm, and they have everything, animals included. So we, we, we ask that we also be given land so that we can live freely. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and good afternoon, everybody, especially the portfolio committee on public works. Let me start by reaffirming the mandate of the public works, which reads as follows. It is mandated to be the custodian and portfolio manager of the national government's immovable assets, such as schools, community hall, recreational center. such as schools, community hall, recreational centers, and small industrial parks, which are dominating in our area in Kangala, which they are now becoming lying there, unused. They are becoming a white elephant. And also, in Dr. J. S. Moroka, where I came from, my name is Jabu Sibanyoni. Eh, representing Sangko, SACP, and ANC. In our area where I'm coming from, in Dr. J. S. Moroka, Siabusa Ward Four, there is a school called Masugu Junior Primary School, which is still roofed with asbestos to date. We are subjecting our kids and our teachers to that, to be exposed to that asbestos there. We have been trying for such a long term to consult with the Public Works and the Department of Education. We are not surprised today. We will support the bill, but with our own reservations. That we will give you that land again and you will neglect it, not using it properly so. But then we support the bill eh with our own reservation. Our firms are lying there, unused. Our roads are killer roads, we have R five seventy-three road here. The Public Works Road and Transport, or the Department of Transport, will speak about that road when there is a fatal accident there. We are now crying about the rail corridor. The minister is telling us that there is no money. Before, there was, there was money injected there. Today we don't know where we are, as Dr. J. S. Moroka and in Kangala Region in particular. We have another plot there at Toiskran, which nobody want to own that eh, 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 want to take responsibility for that, for, for those people there. When they go to municipality, municipality says you are the owner of Public Works. And please, when you are saying we are supporting the bill, don't ever give the land to our local municipality. It rather be owned by Public Works. I so move.
He was the very last one. We indicated, when we were calling them, that he is the last one. So won't take any hand now. Eh. We really appreciate all those who spoke, though they have left us. We are just by ourselves now. We are taking all the information, consolidate it with other information that we have received in other regions or districts. And then as the Portfolio Committee will sit down and discuss, but only after we are through with public hearings by the end of June. Thank you again, siabulela nakuma kosi yetu. The meeting is adjourned.